All right, it is seven thirty PM on January twenty nine, two thousand twenty four. My name is Kevin Ellis. I'm the Chair of the Planning Board this year, and it's like to call this meeting of the Planning Board to order. As I do, I just need to read some brief introductory comments. This meeting is being held remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter Two of the Acts two thousand twenty three and all their applicable laws temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You hereby advise at this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be reported by the town in accordance with the open meeting law. If any person wishes to record this meeting, please notify me at the start of the meeting in accordance with MGL Chapter Thirty A, Section Twenty F, so that I may inform all other persons who have said recorded. All right, not seeing any members of public doing that.
Um. Pardon me, can I request a recording?
Uh, sorry, you go into report the meeting yourself. The town does report all the meetings and post them, so that's just a notice if you're going to record the meeting yourself.
Okay, I just was hoping it would be shared.
Yep, they're all posted publicly.
Thank you.
Um, with that, um, to start with, I should say that I missed the last meeting, and I have watched, I think, all three hours and fourteen or so minutes of it and have signed the MOLTS affidavit saying that I've done so. So I appreciate for those of you on the call last week, your patience. As I get started, I thank Gordon for covering for me last week. We're going to open just one item on the agenda right now, which is zoning articles. There's a series of them, so I'm going to open all of them, but as was promised last week, we'll start with the MBTA Communities Multi-Family Housing in our discussions, but just bear with me as I open all the zoning articles. The first zoning article we might discuss is the update to the floodplain map references and regulations, uh, label zoning article C. The next is zoning article G, which is the MBTA Communities Multi-Family Housing. Uh, next is zoning article H, which is special requirements in the official and open space district, followed by I, electric vehicle charging parking requirements, J signage reference connection, and K personal wireless service facilities. So as I said earlier, we're going to start with the MBTA Communities Multi-Family Housing discussion. We'll see that we're at take us seventy five persons on the call. I think most all of them are probably here for that discussion, so, um, we'll let it run its course certainly. Um, I think what I've asked staff to do to start us off is to give us a brief, um, kind of overview of how we got where we are, uh, what the Multi-Family Housing Act is, what the staff and the town has done thus far in trying to comply, and some of the studies that we've done. And, um, following that presentation, I'll turn it over to members of the public. Please, we welcome your comments. We're here to hear them. We're here to have a discussion with you. So we appreciate your joining the call. Uh, just raise your hand either electronically or physically. I'll do my best to get everyone in turn. I can't quite see everyone on my screen, but I will rely on my ability to help me do that. And I'll call on you to state your name and address for the record, and, uh, please go ahead and speak. I am cognizant that there are seventy some odd people on the call, so if everyone does want to speak, we might have to limit the time for comments. Um, and we'll navigate that as we move forward. Uh, before we kind of get going, let me just introduce my colleagues, which will also serve as kind of a roll call for attendance. So I'm joined by my colleagues, uh, Tracy Schreiber.
Here.
Gary Tondock-Dick.
Here.
Rita De Silva.
Yeah.
And Gordon Carr.
Here.
And, uh, as I said earlier, I'm Kevin Ellis, and we're joined by, um, Emily Wentworth, who's the Director of Community Planning, and Michael Severa, who is our Senior Planner. So with that, Emily, Michael, I'm not sure what you're using to kick this off, but please go ahead.
Uh, sure, I'm happy to, and I'll also just, um, introduce our Special Real Estate Councils, who's on the call. Um, and will be available to answer questions or chime in, uh, neither. Um, so if you can bear with me just a sec, I'm gonna pull up a presentation. Um, Kevin, thank you for setting the table. You did an excellent job. Um, I think our intent this evening, as we discussed at last week's hearing, um, is to sort of recap what the requirements of, um, uh, new state law, uh, are, and then, um, remind folks as to where we are in the process. Um, so if everybody can see my presentation, I will start on the first page, maybe. But my screen is white. Is anybody else seeing white?
I'm listening, Emily.
Okay, bear with me. Let me try again. Uh, I'm just gonna close that window and.
Yeah, go ahead, Emily. So I should say, as also for the record, um, we received substantial public comment on this, um, most of which, Mike, all of which has been posted to the website thus far, and certainly if it has not, if we receive too late, it will be posted to the website. So the board is right through all the public comment. We really appreciate it. Um, just want to state for the record that we have done that to acknowledge that, you know, for people that are speaking, you don't have to go through your letters, you know, verbatim, if you're not inclined to do so. Uh, might save us all some time, um, you know, as we have this discussion. But do want to acknowledge the receipt of numerous comments, and thank you for them.
Thanks for filling in, Kevin. Okay, let's try that again. Um, all right, as a reminder to all, this, uh, public hearing that we're about to open on the MBTA Communities Multi-Family Zoning Requirements, um, was initiated by the board, uh, prior to the submission deadline of December first. Um, the first hearing commenced on January eighth of this year. This is now the third session, um, of the board. Uh, so to recap, the intent of the article is to create zoning regulations that would allow, um, multi-family development by right within a district, um, that would consist of minimally, um, or approximately fifty acres of land, which is now required by Section Three A of the Zoning Act. Um, that section became effective in two thousand twenty one, and then depending on the type of MBTA community you are, um, the state has established certain, um, timeframes to achieve compliance with the mandate. Um, the mandate is related to zoning capacity of a minimum of fifteen units per acre, um, not in fact production. So we're not here tonight to talk about specific projects, but rather about specific, um, potential districts. Where we would be, uh, changing regulations, but not necessarily seeing applications in the near term. Um, the type of community that Hingham was ultimately designated is a commuter rail community. Um, the standards for compliance that are tied to that type of community, um, would, uh, they, they indicate that the town would have to adopt this type of zoning by this upcoming December thirty first. So, um, the annual town meeting is our, our best bet to do that. Um, it also requires, uh, newly, and, and these are related to guidelines that were, um, were created by the state. Um, initially, it was the Department of Housing Community, uh, Housing and, uh, Community Development, DHCD, it's been renamed the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. So, uh, it's the same agency nonetheless. Um, their guidelines, uh, they, um, they brought a number of new concepts into the statute, one of which is related to, uh, a minimum unit capacity for commuter, commuter rail communities. Um, that would be fifteen percent of what the census, um, reported as our two thousand twenty housing, um, units. You can see on the chart on the bottom, uh, what that equates to. It's just shy of fifteen hundred units, um, that we would have to, again, zone for. Um, more specifically, the, the state requirements, again, they, they mandate that we adopt a by right, um, multi-family zoning district that has at least fifty acres, um, within it. Uh, the type of housing that we zone for, um, it cannot be age restricted. It has to be family friendly. Um, while the statute is silent on whether that has to be deed restricted or affordable. Um, the guidelines more recently were amended to allow communities to require ten percent of those units to be affordable and potentially up to twenty percent if we're able to justify it through, uh, that it's economic, um, through a, a process. Um, again, I mentioned on the prior slide that, um, the guidelines impose that we zone for a minimum unit capacity of one thousand four hundred ninety units. Uh, not, not to be, um, too repetitive, but again, that is zoning capacity as opposed to actual production. Um, and there may be other limitations on whether that, um, that zoning capacity could in fact be developed. Um, some of those include, uh, either, you know, local wetland regulations requiring certain buffers or potentially nitrogen loading requirements under local Board of Health regulations. Um, on the second bullet, uh, seventy-five percent of the district has to be located within a half mile of a transit station. Um, that transit station doesn't necess- necessarily have to be located in Hingham, um, for us. So, uh, we actually have five options that we'll review because in part, well, two of them are located just outside of town. Um, twenty-five percent of the district can be located outside of that radius anywhere in town. Um, the state also requires that, you know, we, again, we have fifty acres that we have to minimally rezone. Um, not all of that has to be located in a single district, but not, um, one of them would have to be at least twenty-five acres in size, and none of the districts or sub-districts could be less than five acres in size in order to qualify toward that fifty acres. Um, and, uh, finally, the, the state, uh, precludes us from including within the district, uh, a number of excluded land. Um, a lot of that is publicly owned land, either municipal land, state land, federal land. Um, other types are institutionally owned, so schools, private schools, hospitals, et cetera. Um, also, uh, certain sensitive land, including, um, wetlands cannot count, um, in our developable area. Um, so those are some of the parameters established by the state. Um, the impact of non-compliance, where the town not to adopt by right multi-family zoning are, um, largely financial. There are now four specific funding programs through the state that the town would no longer be, um, eligible for. Uh, there's the Housing Choice, um, grant that includes planning grants and capital grants, Mass Works, um, which is a larger funding resource. Uh, the Housing Works Program, which is, uh, more recently in play, and then finally, the Local Capital of Projects Fund, which, um, it actually is funding for housing authorities as opposed to municipalities. Um, more recently, the state has included in its discretion, um, a number of other programs that we'd no longer be eligible for. Um, some of those, you know, we may not be accessing anyways, for instance, the Rural and Small Town Development Fund. Um, but others we certainly have, um, utilized in the past, the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Program, the Site Readiness Program, um, Community Planning Grants, uh, et cetera, have all been helpful for the town in the past. Um, and then further, the state reserves the right to take, uh, compliance, uh, again, into their discretion when, um, reviewing any other type of funding grants through the Executive Office of Economic Development, that Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, um, the MBTA and other, uh, state programs. And then finally, um, and this is not directly financial, but the Attorney General has also issued an advisory, um, that they may seek legal action against communities for non-compliance. And, um, you know, Susan is, is much more equipped to answer questions about, um, that threat if, if they arise. Um, this is the, the state timeline, um, generally. So I, I had mentioned on the initial slide that because we're a commuter rail community, we have to, um, achieve final compliance by December thirty first of this year. Uh, the process, as outlined by the state, um, commenced, you know, in early spring of two thousand twenty-two. We completed a briefing as required with the Select Board in advance of May second of two thousand twenty-two. Um, submitted a form to the state indicating that we'd like to maintain interim, um, compliance, and then, uh, provided some technical data to the state that helps, um, verify compliance. That's, uh, GIS or geographic information, um, data. Um, in August of two thousand twenty-two, the state issued their final guidelines. I noted they were amended, um, thereafter. That was related to the affordability allowances. Um, and they, um, then subsequently issued a compliance model for communities and other guidance materials in November of two thousand twenty-two. Um, we then, uh, initiated an internal process working with town officials to see if we had any compliant, uh, zoning districts already in place. Um, and, and then after a determination that we did not, we developed an action plan, uh, for zoning amendments that we would then submit to the state to, again, achieve, uh, ultimately final compliance. Um, so where we are in the process right now, as you mentioned at the outset, Kevin, um, we're in the midst of the public hearing process on the zoning article that was initiated by the Planning Board, um, that we assume will remain open for, you know, the next month or more. Um, but ultimately, hopefully, the Planning Board will be in a position to make a recommendation to town meeting, um, along with the Advisory Committee. Um, and so that's, that's more or less the state process. Um, whoop, sorry, skipped one. Uh, locally, the work, um, or the public discussions that went into, um, that timeline include five public meetings before both, um, either jointly or individually, the Select Board and the Planning Board, um, over two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three. Um, in the fall of two thousand twenty-three, just this past fall, the Planning Board held three public meetings to review draft zoning. Um, again, in advance of that December first locally imposed, um, zoning article deadline. Um, outside of that more formal public process, the, um, staff had discussions, um, internally with a, a number of town officials. Um, also externally with representatives of the Democratic Town Committee. Um, there was a coffee with the, um, or excuse me, a meeting of the World Affairs Group at the Senior Center. There was a separate town meeting, coffee hour, um, with department staff, community and planning, um, department staff. And, um, then a number of discussions with owners of parcels that could be affected by the rezoning. Um, we also attained a, uh, it's called a three A, but based on the, the provision in the statute that was amended. Um, technical assistance grant from the Massachusetts Housing Partnership, um, where we were able to engage an outside professional bowler engineering um, to help us prepare our draft compliance model. Um, we also, this past fall, attained a Housing Choice Grant, um, so that we could engage RKG, um, to complete an economic feasibility analysis to increase, not occlusional, sorry, this is an outdated version, um, afford the level of affordability that we could require in our zoning. Um, again, to potentially somewhere between ten and fifteen percent. Um, we plan to have more public sessions in the coming weeks. I know the League of Women Voters is, um, hosting a regional forum on the topic, including Hingham, um, in mid-February, and, and then we're going to be submitting our compliance model and draft zoning to the state for an informal review to ensure that we've checked all the boxes before, um, you know, our public process concludes. Um, this is, you know, these are the, the options that we initially looked to create compliant zoning within. Um, the circles you're seeing on this map are the half-mile, um, radii from the three internal, um, transit stations that we have in Hingham. That's the West Hingham and Nanteska Junction, commuter rail stations, but also the Hingham Ferry, and then small portions of, um, the radius from both Cohasset and East Weymouth commuter rail stations fall partially within Hingham. So we had, uh, again, five options to initially look at to see if perhaps we had more or less attained the spirit of the, um, requirements, if not all the technical details. Um, when you start to drill down to these areas, you'll see, I don't know if you can tell from the legend, but all of those green lands are green areas, um, and, and are excluded lands that's, uh, protected either because it's publicly owned, um, or conservation land or otherwise. There are also, um, sensitive areas shown here. You can see the flood zone designations within certain of these areas. Um, East Weymouth and Cohasset, uh, initially looked, um, you know, like it would be infeasible to locate a district or sub-district of at least five acres, um, largely based on those excluded land areas. West Hingham, um, similarly includes, uh, either lands that are restricted for conservation purposes, publicly owned or sensitive because of, um, floodplain. Um, while it may appear initially that the Hingham Ferry and Nanteska Junction areas are, are less encumbered. Um, there were some local, uh, locally imposed restrictions, I would say, outside of the actual three A statute, um, that guided us away from some of those areas. Um, one is that in particular around the, the ferry, we have more commercial industrially zoned areas. Um, we hoped to guide our districts to areas where residential development was already permitted, um, because it's more consistent, and we didn't want to negatively impact our, um, tax base. Uh, we have very little, um, in general, uh, commercial or industrially zoned land. Um, also around, you know, West Hingham and Nanteska Junction, um, to some extent, we already have built out neighborhoods with, um, less available vacant residential land. So we're trying to guide things away from, um, something that already is being utilized for single-family, two-family, potentially multi-family, um, development unless it, it was appropriate. Um, around Nanteska Junction, there were two additional constraints, um, that the town considered. Uh, the first is, is that there is no remaining sewer capacity through, um, the Hingham and Hull Intermunicipal Agreement, um, that serves that area of town. Um, and then also, a lot of our climate, um, action plans have identified that portion of town as being at risk of, um, flooding in particular from sea level rise. So it may not make sense to guide, um, denser residential development into that particular radius. Um, conversely, around the Hingham Ferry, we have already, um, built a significant amount or permitted, and, and then thereafter, um, produced a significant amount of multi-family housing. Um, so we initially looked to the Hingham Ferry area to rezone areas that have been improved by residential development, either through a special permit or a comprehensive permit, um, in a way that would, um, achieve the requirements of, of the statute, uh, just change those areas to allow that similar form of development by right. Um, on the next slide, if we drill into that area in particular, you could see highlighted in red the parcels that, um, would be included within some of the proposed district. Um, if you're, uh, familiar with the area, it's, you know, it's Hewitt's Landing Development. There is an initial Avalon Town Home and Multi-Family, um, development, and then a more recent one approved through comprehensive permit on three A up here, um, as well as, uh, the Cove, which was permitted in the last handful of years, um, off of Beale Street, and that all of those areas could be included towards our seventy-five percent of the district that's located within a half mile of transit. Um, the Cove just falls within, um, because the radius touches its front edge. Um, so that's the, the first significant area we looked at. Um, those parcels wouldn't quite, um, meet the fifty-acre minimum. Um, so we started to look for other areas that were reasonably proximate to, um, transit, but maybe within the twenty-five percent that we're allowed to include outside of a half-mile radius, um, of a transit station. Um, ultimately, we landed on this, um, this French Street, uh, sub-district, uh, that's proposed, um, in part because it's located within a residential zoning district, but is not being used in that, that manner presently. Um, so just to bullet or, um, recap the reasons why we narrowed in and, um, as the town on the, the particular proposed, um, overlay district, uh, near the shipyard within the, the ferry radius. Um, again, those parcels have already been permitted as multi-family housing. We've again met in part the spirit of the law, um, by, by planning, sound planning and permitting, um, albeit not by right. And then, um, uh, out of the station areas that we had in Hingham, those five, um, radii, um, it was really only the radius around the MBTA Ferry that, um, provided enough acreage to meet that minimum twenty-five acre chunk that we'd need to, um, satisfy the, the biggest sub-district that the state will approve, um, and gets us significantly towards that minimum unit capacity of the one thousand four hundred ninety units that we'd have to zone for, um, since it doesn't get us again entirely there. Um, we looked to the French Street parcels. I, I've mentioned this already. It's residentially zoned, but has a historic, non-conforming, more industrial use, um, that isn't necessarily compatible with the surrounding, um, residential neighborhoods. Um, the project, uh, it would be subject to all local zoning regulations, um, and, and don't even just zoning, but wetland and, um, Board of Health regulations, and the residential use in that location may be less intensive than, um, the, the current non-conforming use is, um, particularly with respect to, uh, you know, truck traffic. Um, the area is adjacent to, um, conservation land, so that provides recreational opportunities for future residents, if, if it should ever be built out, um, but also offers a buffer to other area, um, residences. Um, speaking of area residences, the nearest single-family home, um, is more than four hundred feet from the project. Um, but the properties are also still within a reasonable distance of public transit. The, um, East Weymouth commuter rail station is just over point six acres away, um, so as opposed to point five, it's point six-ish. Uh, the West Hingham commuter rail station is about point eight miles, so it's, um, still, you know, uh, certainly a, a close commute by vehicle and, um, not so far for pedestrians either. Um, we offer this slide not to, you know, get into all the. Um we offer this slide not to, you know, get into all the details, but to remind you that. The pending zoning article does include a number of dimensional design and performance standards. That any, you know, future potential MBTA multifamily project would have to comply with. Um ones we'd like to highlight in particular because there's been significant interest in the French Street subdistrict. Is that the the height requirements are, you know, they mirror what is already allowed in that district. So a single family home um in Residence B can be as tall as thirty-five feet or two and a half stories. Um the multifamily zoning would mirror that uh limitation. Um and and then actually increases the the setback requirements. So where, you know, side or rear yard for a single family can be twenty feet from a property line. Um that would be increased in the proposed zoning to fifty feet for a multifamily development. I've mentioned a couple of times that a a multifamily, by right multifamily project. Would have to comply with all local regulations. This chart spells out what some of those regulations involve um in a bit more detail. So um in terms of zoning, we just reviewed some of the setbacks, height limitations. Um any one of these projects would have to comply with those standards in order to be eligible for a full site plan review. And you know, this board is quite familiar with uh the intensity of that type of review. You would be looking at everything from, you know, the exterior building materials to landscaping. To photometric plans um in making your uh determination on a particular project. Uh conversely, a a forty B project, which is how some of our other multifamily housing has been permitted. That has the right to, though that type of project has um the ability to seek waivers. Um from any local regulation. Um that includes zoning standards. Like the ones we just reviewed, it could also include um wetlands regulations such as. Buffers to resource areas um as well as Board of Health regulations. Such as um nitrogen loading limitations um that are imposed locally as opposed through a. Um state uh regulation, so.
Also Emily?
Yeah, I was. Sorry, my slides were not advancing. I'm having a little bit of a hiccup here. Um. So to to give you a sense of the other type of multifamily housing development. That we already have in town um in terms of its appearance and makeup. Um we highlighted some of the developments that include a certain level of affordability. You can see the level um on the right-hand side of that bottom table. Um but there are some examples of of projects that you're familiar with um from, you know, living and driving around town. Um and then there there are some images um on the far right-hand side. Um that show you what that two and a half story form of multifamily may look like. Um and in the middle of this uh slide, you'll see that. Um the type of household that would live in the ten, potentially fifteen. Um optimistically twenty, but uh not likely uh percent of the proposed. Um multifamily uh zoning, uh the range of incomes to. In order to be eligible for an affordable unit, uh depends on the um household size, but for a. A one-bedroom or one-person household, the income limit is about eighty-three thousand dollars. For a four-person household, the income limit is almost a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So it's really moderate income as opposed to um low-income housing. Uh at the eighty percent area median income.
Thank you very much, Emily. Um so it is seven forty and uh I think just check, there's ninety-five people on our call. Um which is great. So gonna open it up to public comment um as we start to do that again, just reminder to state your name and address for the record. Um and also just for the people who weren't here when the call started, we've received extensive public comment, uh the, you know, the emails, the letters. Um all that public comment we posted to the planning board's website. So we appreciate that commentary and have read through it. Um so want to remind you that, you know, we're here as, you know, town people as well to hear your thoughts. Um you know, we encourage you and really just hope we keep the discourse friendly. And you uh you remind you that we're all, you know, here to discuss and listen and hear to take into consideration what you have to say. Let me just be mindful of that in your comments, uh especially a topic like this where there are a lot of various opinions. Um it can get a bit heated, so my job is to help facilitate that and ask you just as the public to be mindful of that and making your comments. So with that, I will turn it over to the public and uh encourage you just to raise your hand electronically or in person, and I'll do my best to spot you and call on you. And I should add with, you know, close to a hundred people, we'll keep the comments to a minute, a couple of minutes, just to make sure we can afford everyone the opportunity to speak and we'll go further from there.
I see you, Joanna.
Yeah, Joanna, please go ahead. Just state your name and address for the record and please.
Yeah, my my name's Jo- Johanna Seelin. I'm at one sixty-six Versi Street. I'm just curious why you picked the little spot zone um in the over by the. On um Free Street and why you didn't just do more at the shipyard where it would seem to make more sense. Thank you.
So Emily, I'm happy to let you kind of take the lead in answering some of the kind of technical study questions. Um you know, I I think in the shipyard, the sense was that we took all the the housing, you know, that has been developed and has been built out and. We put this overlay district on top of that, you know, including the code, which is, you know, just really touching on the shipyard. You know, as developed residential. And then as Emily said, one of the, at least metrics that was trying to guide us is we looked for residential areas. Where there was a five-acre minimum lot size, which is more of a limiting factor than you might think. And looked for areas where there might be, you know, a good residential use for the property. So I think that was, you know, as Emily walked the state of Genesis, so it led us to this, this lot.
I I guess I don't understand why you didn't do more at the shipyard, so because you didn't include the entire shipyard property. Why didn't you just get your fifty acres there and you'd meet the state requirements and?
So Emily, you can you can go through what's not included in the shipyard. Some of it is the MBTA lot, which is an excluded property and not allowed to be used. I mean, so I think that is a big swath if it looks like that.
Yep, exactly. And then the the two other, you know, mixed use and or residential multifamily. Properties in the shipyard, uh the uh ten Shipyard Drive and twenty-three Shipyard Drive. On their own, they don't meet the five-acre minimum. Other than that, um everything is presently being used. Uh as the per commercial or industrial component of um the mixed-use shipyard redevelopment area. Uh so making it residential just uh eliminates that net positive um type of use. Uh in terms of tax revenue.
Why couldn't it just be mixed use? You know, keep your commercial and add residential, do what they do other places and just make, you know, use it. In other ways and allow it as residential and allow the developer to decide which was better for the for them.
Yeah, that that part is how the o- proposed overlay districts, and I apologize that I didn't touch on this earlier. But the underlying zoning for the the shipyard, that use permit that's already in place. Or for the French Street properties, which is single-family residential, that will remain in place. And any prospective future developer or redeveloper will have the ability to use either. The existing zoning or if town meeting approves the um overlay district. Um so that was the the way the the town was looking at it.
I would like to make a comment.
Sure, please go ahead. I just see Jim and Sue and.
Jim and Sue, Jim Dresser and his wife Sue.
Thank you, please go ahead.
We sent you a letter. Uh I won't bore everybody with reiterating what I said, but I would like to ask a request that. All meeting participants be provided with a link to the audio, to the to this video, because it's not timely being posted. And I had wanted to reference last meeting. Um and with that, uh that's kind of all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thanks, dressing. Uh James Cris, please go ahead.
Hi, good evening. I I I have some questions about the timing of when.
Jim, just sorry, just your name and address for the record, please.
I'm sorry?
Just your name and address for the record.
Yes, yeah, yes. Jim Cruiser, Ten Quail Run. I had some questions about the timing of 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 this. From what I understand it, uh the plan needs to essentially be in place by the end of the calendar year. But i- i- if it still needed to be approved at town at a town meeting, why does it necessarily have to be now? That is, can it be submitted for the end of this calendar year with the idea that we have uh the ability to approve it later? Or with with the idea we're putting that forward at town meeting? And my concern here is I I think we're rushing to get ahead to be the first to do this. Uh and and I would like to see how some other uh towns have this shakeout. I think we're really on the early end here. And I'd like to see how this played out a little more. So can someone speak to the timing here? And if it would be possible to submit the plan provisionally at the end of the calendar year with the idea that it would be approved next uh town meeting, not this year's upcoming one.
Uh let's use a Murphy handle that. I think the answer is is no, unfortunately, it's not an option.
Oh, my name is Susan Murphy. I'm the special real estate counsel for the town. Um so the way that the. I lost, oh, sorry, am I? The way that the guidelines are written, the it has to be uh fully adopted and in the community. And then submitted to the state no later than December thirty-first, or the town is no is is no longer in compliance. So as Emily mentioned, there were some milestones to allow towns to remain in preliminary compliance um or interim compliance. In which case the town could still apply for grants um and take advantage of uh state programs. But if it's not adopted and submitted to the state by the thirty-first, then um that compliance. Um and that interim compliance ends.
Thank you, Susan. Jim, I don't want to cut you off. Please go ahead. You got more questions or comments?
Uh and uh well, so the the other issue I have is in terms of the availability of 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 the. Review powers i- in this district once it's approved. Uh my understanding was that they were a lot more limited uh i- here in that. Once we have essentially put the district down uh as being approved, um we we won't have many of the same. Uh oversight and planning capabilities that we would otherwise have. And and if if probably Susan could speak a little bit more to why we actually would have those uh abilities in this in this district.
Sure. So the you the the district that that the French Street parcel is currently in it is a single-family residential district. Um to develop in a single-family residential district, that would be applying for a subdivision approval under the Subdivision Control Act. The subdivision control law is an as-of-right use under state law. So if someone comes in with a subdivision plan that has either no waivers from the local regulations or reasonable waivers. Then they are entitled to approval. Um so site plan review for a MBTA community type of project under with in compliance. Under all the regulations that are being proposed, under the zoning, the full of zoning article. It's site plan review as opposed to subdivision control, but it's the same. If they come in with a project that fully complies. With all the town zoning regulations, um they can be subjected to um reasonable regu- uh conditions. And modifications to that plan, for example, to make it safer, et cetera. Um but it's as of right, the same way subdivision control is as of right within that district. So the 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 type of project allowed is as of right, whether it's subdivision or whether it's site plan review.
Okay, thank you.
And Susan, just to clarify, can you touch on, I think Emily touched on this earlier, just kind of following on to his point. Uh outside of zoning, the the town's oversight as vis a vis septic, as vis a vis conservation, uh your board of health, whatever else it may be. Uh how how does that o- overlay onto this interact with this? Because that's another form of oversight that's relevant here.
Right. And and Emily spoke to this. It's the same as any type of project. Um unlike forty B where they can bypass uh the town's local wetland regulations or a board of health regulations. Um they would have to uh comply with and and they will apply to their project. I'll note that the guidelines issued by DHD, which is now known as HLC, so I'll refer to it going forward as HLC. Those guidelines actually state that projects must comply with local wetlands and. State and septic regulations and that that may result in a project being smaller than what it's owned for. And that happens in many projects and in even in Hingham. Um where if it was a perfectly flat, dry lot with sewer or perfect soils. They might be able to build to the full extent of the bylaw, but often they have to scale back or adapt the project to what's there. So that same process and review would happen for any MBTA community zoning project.
Thank you, Susan. All right, uh next, I see on my screen Christopher Christensen. So just your name and address for the record, please.
Uh yep, Chris Christensen, One Quail Run. I I spoke last week, so I'll try to keep this to about a minute or so, but. Um multiple issues, I think at the onset for the parcels at French and Hobart, which I think to me. Calling the question, the ability to actually build a multifamily unit at the site. Um number one, wetlands in near proximity, I think we talked about that a bit, but two, the site also be the, also used to be the town dump. And so there are questions around soil quality. Um but the largest hurdle is potentially the lack of sewer in this part of town. Um Ms. Wentworth, you indicated we are not looking at parcels in the northeast part of town because the Weir River sewer system is at capacity. Well, the French Street location has no sewer capacity either. In fact, there's no sewer at all. Um so it's unclear to me. How the French Street site would be deemed a fitting location when, in fact, it fails the same test that parcels do in the Weir River sewer area.
Yes, sir, Chris, I can just address that really quickly. So I mean, a pro- a product like this, uh it has a lot of products we see. Would would actually, I mean, well, a project of this scale would probably actually have to have its own onsite wastewater treatment, but. You know, they'd be they'd be using a septic system like most of the town and and here would be uh, you know, um I'll let Emily get into technical details if she wants, but. Kind of, you know, really a wastewater treatment facility. So they'd be obligated to build that onsite as part of the project in order to comply. So that's how that something like this would work at the scale in a site like this. And that might be true whether it's seven houses in a community or whether it's, you know, a single home. Conceptually, the same idea applies.
Sure, yeah, I think an onsite uh facility makes sense, given that uh, you know, the area that would be needed for a septic field for, you know, let's call it. A hundred uh unit apartment building potentially would be massive, right? It just, there's not enough area there. Um but just still, I guess, asking the question, if if we're willing to construct. Or would consider constructing onsite wastewater facility on the French Street parcels, why also would we not consider that for the area in the Weir River sewer system?
Um just just as a rule of thumb, the that portion of town around Nanteska Junction has notoriously poor soils. Um so it's it's very ledgy or wet. Um a- and that's in part why we entered into an agreement to have it serviced um by sewer. Because of the environmental sensitivity of the surrounding area. Um whereas, you know, we don't have a specific soil test of the French Street properties, but um, you know, it's presumed. Uh that they would be in um better condition than um the soils around Nanteska Junction.
Okay. Um I I guess lastly, given the surrounding area is owned, uh I think it's residential B with single-family homes on. Larger thirty thousand minimum square foot lots. Um it's not clear to me how planning could approve a large multifamily building. As fitting with the character and scale of the surrounding area, which as you, of course, you know, is one of our bylaws to preserve the character of our town and the neighborhoods. In fact, I think just last week, this board had a fifty-minute or so discussion. Uh on whether or not an existing single-family home could be rebuilt at a larger size, just down the street about, you know, a mile away. And so. I I think if the goal is to increase housing, a zoning proposal needs to be feasible for construction. And that it would ultimately have, you know, reasonably past site review and it would be somewhat disingenuous for the board and the town to ultimately approve rezoning. Parcels if it's unlikely a multifamily unit could ever be built on it. Would feel like we're a bit checking off. Would feel like we're a bit checking off our requirement. Yes, but you know, strong doubt, it could actually be built on that site, given the concerns outlined. And so yeah, just, you know, given there are other options such as rezoning existing, existing multifamily units of the shipyard for higher density, or, you know, downtown, there's like Sixth Station Street, 109 North Street. Given, given those options, and then the concerns with the non-buildability of the French Street parcels, you know, just we'd love some discussion on, on the trade-offs there. And how are things about that?
Thank you. Your site plan comments duly noted and understood. You know, obviously, it's a subjective factor that we apply in every site plan or test we do across properties, but your point is duly noted and appreciated. Emily, do you want to talk quickly about kind of the size limitations on the North Street parcels? Do we understand them? And you just, you know, because I've seen that in some of the letters, and it's probably worth at least explaining.
Yeah, unfortunately, those properties are all smaller. We, we don't have a minimum land area requirement in the downtown. So the, the parcels just historically have, you know, even since before we had zoning, been much smaller in character in order to amass enough to fit that five acre minimum sub-district size would largely involve rezoning a significant portion of the downtown. And we mentioned earlier that we are trying to preserve our business zoning districts to the extent that we can and not necessarily redirect those to by right multifamily zoning districts.
Thanks, Emily. Mr. Dealey?
Hi, John Dealey, 14 Weathervein Court, just off Beale Street. So I want to talk about this from a slightly different perspective, and that is to go back to how this all started. And that the metropolitan Boston area needs a lot of new housing. And the estimate seems to be somewhere around 130,000 units of housing. And this need to help the economy going forward, otherwise we're going to stifle our economy if we don't create some housing. This need is so strong that the legislature and the governor have created this MBTA mandate and has allotted to our town creating zoning for 1,500 units of housing. So Hangum's response to that seems to be that the 120 units on French Street because the, the Cove and Hangum Shipyard space is fully built out and is less than 10 years old. And so it's certainly not going to be some new housing there. So basically, we're saying that our response to this is creating a lot on French Street of 120 units of housing. And so to me, this is not going to be helpful to the, this metropolitan Boston area need for 130,000 units of housing that we have, we, that we should be contributing to as part of the larger metropolitan Boston area. I've looked at, you know, what other towns have done. They've taken this very seriously. They have created zoning for the allotted units that they have, towns like Milton and Newton and Brookline, and it's all been in the newspaper. It's, it's rough going, but they have done it. Some of them have even proposed more than what the, the state is mandating they do. So I, I just think that this approach that we're taking that has really no other than this discussion, there's no citizens committee. My, my proposal, there should be a citizens committee that kind of reviews this, comes up with some possibilities of areas and work through a process like these other communities have done. And, and so that we, we respond in a way that the, the state is, is mandating. And in thinking about doing that, we'd have to think about this as a community sort of thing. How do we build community in Hangum? How do we look at, you know, what we currently have and how we build it in such a way that people feel like they're part of the community? So I think the French Street lot is not a good proposal because there's nothing around there that's going to meet the needs of people, be able to walk or, you know, be able to access services and so on. And so my, my sense is that we should kind of take a different approach here. And I think the sites like the site behind the Bank of America, just off of 3A, across some stuff and shops, there's a big office building there that's very underutilized, there's big signs looking to rent hundreds of thousands of square feet on. There is, you know, then there's Hitchcock Shoe Company, there's Talbot's, all properties that probably over time are going to want to make a change. And we provided those as opportunities. There's certainly not a lot of neighbors around that area in the same way that French Street has. But that's just an idea. I mean, there might be plenty of things in, and yes, there's, you know, we may lose some income, but we need, there's some pros and cons to doing these things. And, you know, I think that we should be trying to, to add middle-income housing, handicap housing, housing for seniors, and it should be ownership. It shouldn't be rental housing. People should be able to gain some benefit from it. And so that would be my recommendation. I'll stop there.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dealey. That's very helpful. Appreciate it. Mr. Manning, I'm just going to go across my screen. See it popping up here?
All right, thanks, Kevin. Yeah, Tim Manning, 30 French. First, I guess I, a question and then a comment. Emily, did I understand correctly that part of why, if not the entirety of the reason why the ferry option didn't work is because it didn't capture the totality of space needed? Because it was, that wasn't available? Is that correct?
Yeah, we didn't have quite enough 50, the contiguous 50 acres or even sub-districts amounting to 50 acres over there.
So is that, just to make sure I understand it correctly, it has to be all in one project in order to?
No, but there has to be at least one contiguous area of 25 acres minimum, and then no sub-districts of less than five acres. So between the Cove and then the contiguous areas within the shipyard redevelopment area, those combined, we didn't quite hit the 50-acre minimum.
So let me ask the question another way then. Is, is it possible to reach some percentage of it and then do a separate project? And, you know, scale down such that you could achieve it in two projects for Lehman's terms?
Yeah, we, we, as long as we hit that minimum unit capacity and no less than 15 units per acre on average, our district could be spread out all over. That's what we chose.
Okay. Yeah. So I mean, I think, I think that kind of speaks to my, my concern. I think from a rhetoric perspective hearing tonight, I think there's, there's a desire to make this work in this current space. And again, you heard where I'm, where I'm from. So I'm from French Street here. But there's, you know, some of the rhetoric is that, you know, the current space is non-conforming. That I'll tell you, the idea of a 120-unit project would also be non-conforming with our current, current, you know, status of where, where we live. So I just, I would be desirous to have kind of further conversations about other ways in which this project might look. Just not sure where the characterization comes from in terms of how a, a large development would fit into our current area. Has there been discussion about arguably the most dangerous intersection in our town, which is, you know, French and High, you know, so have some, you know, real concerns about how this could fit in and why this, you know, is, is being pushed if there's maybe some other creative, different ways from folks who have done wonderful work. And I want to, I should have started this way. Thank you for the effort and energies you've put into it. But concerned that there might be an interest in making this work when it's kind of a maybe, you know, square peg round hole kind of idea. I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Marla Scaffington, please.
Hey there. I'm Marla Scaffington. My husband and I, Mark, own the house at Two Quail Run, and we submitted a letter expressing our staunch opposition to this rezoning. In that letter, we expressed that it is taking a suburban neighborhood and putting an urban overlay on it is completely inappropriate. Completely inappropriate. Those who know me on this call know that I'm usually not afraid to say what's on people's minds. So I'm going to take, I'm going to, I'm going to make some comments and you might get uncomfortable, but I've got to get it off my chest. First of all, I have a couple of questions and I just want yes or no answers. Emily, when you mentioned that you talked to the abutters and you had coffee with people, did you talk to the people next door that were 400 feet from you? And was that documented?
Ms. Scaffington, I don't think she mentions she talked to the abutters. In the presentation, she talked to the potential landowners that might be rezoned as part of the outreach.
And quite a few abutters since last week.
So the people, the next door that live right next to that lot, did you talk to them?
Nope. Kevin, are you comfortable with me answering?
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, Ms. Scaffington.
I'll take that as a no. Okay, next question. Susan, you're the real estate expert. Let me ask you a question. If this gets rezoned and you guys put up this 120 development, what do you think's going to happen to the property values of our neighborhood?
Ms. Scaffington, let's pause for a moment.
No, 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 no.
Ms. Scaffington.
I just, this is, I'm asking fair questions. I'm asking fair.
With all due respect, with all due respect, this is not a cross-examination. It's not interrogation. We're here to conform with the MBTA Community Zoning Act. The research we've done led us to suggest this as a possibility, and we're asking the community for input. I don't want you to attack members of the board, staff and council over that. We have read the letters. We understand there's some concerns about property values. But we take those concerns into consideration, but we're looking for comments on the appropriateness of the zoning district. No matter where this district is located, other, if we said, hey, we're going to put this in the Liberty Pole, we'd probably hear the same concerns from them. If we said we're going to put this in South Hangum, we'd hear the same concerns. We understand those concerns and they're real. We're doing our best to try to comply with the state has forced on us. And part of that's suggesting this district. We're here to listen to feedback on that. Ms. Scaffington, I'm not appreciating your body language or your commentary here. This is a discourse and a dialogue. Every other member of the public has managed to be perfectly appropriate. We'll move on to the next person. Hang a mic. If you'd like to go ahead, you can say your name and address for the record. If it's not Hang a mic, then Mr. Roth?
Oh, okay. I was, I was muted. Sorry. This is Lorraine Finneran, 162 Lincoln Street. I think what you just said kind of cracked me up because I hear everybody doesn't want this near them. And I happen to be right where they want to put everything. I'm 162 Lincoln Street. We're close to the shipyard. We're, everybody thinks they can just add whatever to the shipyard. The congestion is crazy. So I think all of us, as I'm sitting here listening, need to suck it up. Because it sounds to me like our state, because Hangum is very democratic town. You've all voted for this stuff. And this is what we're left with, where our government of Massachusetts is now regulating how a town's going to be. They do not want to have any residential towns anymore. Let's face it. This is part of the Obama thing of having everybody live together. The other thing is, I would question the other person who talked about all the housing. Charleston has has just taken down their projects. And what's happening is the projects in the inner city are being removed in beautiful, you know, high-end apartment condos and stuff are being built. And we are having to take that on. And that's what this is all about. So let's all be honest about it. So for everybody who doesn't want it in their backyard, change your voting and because this is the way it's going to be and it's going to get bigger. This isn't the only one. And it, it's only the first of many that are going to come our way where they're telling us what we have to rezone and do in our town. So I, I'm somebody who's in the thick of it. They want to put a wifi in front of my house. So I feel for all of yous. I wish to God that you guys felt for somebody like myself that has been had to take on the burden of the high traffic in, in the trucks and everything in my area. So I'll probably vote for having it there because you know what? I think we have enough down in this part of the town. I'm done.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Roth, please go ahead.
Hi, yeah, thank you. Jonathan Roth, 8 Stonegate Lane. I think, you know, my, I spoke last week as well, but you know, after doing some of my own additional research, just want to reiterate how disappointed I think all of us are to have not heard about this previously. I think the, the, I talked to some of the abutters last week is not exactly appropriate in my, in my candid opinion. But the, the, some of the main issues I'd like to highlight is this feels a lot like a check-the-box exercise that's just not appropriate. This, this location does not meet any of the Hangum things we've discussed about the character of this neighborhood. It's not appropriate in Hangum's lens. It is also not appropriate in the MBTA 3A lens. It does not limit single-use vehicles. It does not, is not close to mixed-use infrastructure. It's not within 0.5 miles of a train station. It meets literally none of the requirements, both locally and from the state. And it's just chosen because it's, it's just there. And, and it's non-conforming and it won't be conforming afterwards. And so I'd like to make that extremely well-known at this point that you know, in the duty that's, that's been done to research locations, we have, we have somehow landed on a place that meets none of the requirements of both locally or state. And, and I would just also like to touch back on the similar conversation around soils and wastewater that, that were somewhat dismissed. And I just want to circle back to that because it, it was seemingly just fine to create a wastewater plant here on, you know, at that location potentially, but not okay in near Nantastic Junction, right? This, but the soil there is not good, but it wasn't even tested here. So there's a lot of like what-aboutism about this location just to check this box. And so, and so that to me, as a resident of this neighborhood, I find disappointing. I find the due diligence seemingly is lacking in this, this study. And I would also like to lastly point out that Cohasset, in their process, hired an outside consultant and excluded any residential neighborhood from the outset, from their investigations of where to zone for these locations because of the impact it would have to that, to those districts. And, you know, I'm not sure why we have taken such a different approach, but I find it extremely disappointing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roth. Mr. Sweeney?
Hi, thank you. Doug Sweeney, 2 Stevensway. Thanks for your time and thanks to the board for hosting the meeting. I do want to express some concerns that it, it sounds like some of the reasons for not choosing the shipyard and that we don't want to rezone commercial or industrial spaces are being flipped on its head for the French Street location, or saying, well, it's industrial, so it's not conforming. That doesn't quite add up. And I also think the the idea that we're saying, well, it, it may be less disruptive than heavy truck traffic, doesn't really comport with reality or have much grounding in people's actual experience. So I just, if we're going to have reasons to do stuff, I, I just If we're gonna have reasons to do stuff, I, I just think we have to make sure that we're. Uh, following the, the evidence and, and not just going on supposition. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Um, Pauline?
Hi, Pauline Mine, thirty-six Felucia Road. Um, I just had, just had a few questions. Um, I'm kind of still concerned that uh, the issue of the dump, the former dump that was there really hasn't been addressed. I don't know where it is on the property. Um, or if it's ever been mapped out, that would concern me. I'm concerned about how much usable acreage there is there, if it's five acres. Um, I've kind of been comparing this to the um, the building over in um, Weymouth on the other side of the um, Jackson Square tracks, the um, overlook. Um, that is a sixty-five unit building. It's four stories tall on three point five acres approximately. Um, I don't see how you're gonna get a hundred and twenty units in this, but maybe you can explain that. Um, and as far as the tax base goes versus the um, the um. Commercial versus um, residential, uh, the tax rate's the same, I believe, for commercial and residential units. So. I don't know why that would make a difference. Um, and I think that's all I had to comment on. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, uh, you know, and we hired an outside consultant to evaluate the site. I'll let Emily touch on that a little just to make sure that it would conform with, you know, the ability to have and satisfy the housing requirement. Uh, I just want to stress again, not a single member of the board is looking to approve a project. Nothing's in front of us. Um, I, I don't know what the soil is like there. I don't know how the wastewater will be handled, but you know, that. That's a, that's a common approach that we see where applicants come to us with solutions to those problems. We evaluate them as part of the review process. So, you know, that would be the next. You know, when and if a development occurred, that would be the phase. We're here, we're talking about the appropriateness of a zoning district and whether or not this is an appropriate district. And our goal tonight is to listen to your concerns and help, you know, gauge that and look for the feedback as we, as we work our way through this. Um, you know, I don't want to speak over there as a board, but we looked at this, we thought, well, we had something that was in a residential district that wasn't residential. And, you know, we thought perhaps it would be a less intensive uses. We're hearing from some people that that's not it, they don't either can see it that way or that's not a concern of theirs. And this is the kind of feedback that we're looking for and evaluating.
Could I, could I just ask one more question? If this, if, if this doesn't come up with the required amount of um, units, would there, we then have to come back and find more land to do that?
No, so the, we need to provide zoning for the required density and required units. Whether or not those units are built is, is not what the act is looking for. And whether or not that if something is built on that site, whether or not it hits the density requirements is not what the act is looking at. It's about the zoning requirements that the community puts in place, not about what actually gets built. So we know going back, the zoning would allow for it and what can actually get built is, is a separate issue. So that would not be the case. Um, Mel Hernandez?
Hi, uh, Mel Hernandez, ninety-four Manatee. Um, yeah, I think I've got just, you know, a comment and then a question for. Uh, I guess maybe two questions. So, uh, the comment is, you know, I, I, I definitely feel the same way as everyone else is here. You know, I, I was kind of blindsided by this, to be honest with you, uh, you know, to, to kind of echo some of the other comments. I was not aware. Um, luckily I had a bunch of uh, neighbors that brought this to my attention. Um, and then, you know. Just having had a couple of days to kind of review what, you know, was, what is being proposed, it just looks like there's a lot of due diligence that's lacking here. I mean, Kevin, you mentioned it. You don't know what the soil is like, you know, you don't know what, you know, there's a lot of variables here that's, that are still kind of left on, on, just open-ended. And so, you know, I feel like we could make better decisions if we've got a little more, uh, you know, time and effort to um, think about what are our options? I don't know what our options are. I really haven't seen any other options other than the option you presented. And uh, so that's kind of my comment and my question is, you know, based on my, the body language and the presentation I saw from. Uh, Kevin and, and Emily here, it really looks like that there's one option here, right? Um, you know, is, are there other options that you're, you're considering? Uh, is there actually options for us or is this done deal and you're gonna submit it and you're, you're, you know, that's it?
Uh, I'm sorry, I'm not trying to convey anything at all of my body language and the, the purpose in having is just to get the community feedback and this is the feedback we want. I mean, that's what we're looking to welcome. I just don't want people accusing the staff of doing something they didn't do or, you know, interrogating people. So I'm just very cognizant of that. That's the only thing I'm very concerned about in, in the discourse of the meeting. Um, I'll let Susan comment on kind of the other, the review and the options. This is what the planning board had looked at and talked about and kind of brought forward for discussion. Um, and that's where we are in the process, you know, looking to talk about and understand and get the community feedback.
Yeah, and, and Kevin, I won't repeat what you just said is, is accurate. This is what was brought forward after the um. Eight public meetings that have been had over the last year and a half to two years with the select board and the planning board, all publicly posted meetings where they were discussed. Um, at this point, there is a zoning amendment article that was filed by the December first zoning amendment deadline in the town bylaw. That's, so the process is, a zoning article gets proposed. Planning board, other boards, members of the public can propose zoning amendments. They have to be submitted to the town by December first. Um, and then they are sent back to the planning board to have public hearings, which have to be published in the newspaper, which has happened. Um, at, at, at this point, the proposal is the parcels that are described as Emily put in the presentation. Um, you know, the board makes a recommendation to town meeting. So the warrant article currently is on the warrant. The planning board makes a recommendation. It's a non-binding recommendation to town meeting. Advisory committee will likely wise make. A recommendation to town meeting. Um, and then town meeting will, you know, act as town meeting chooses to act. Um, to remove parcels or to insert new parcels at this point. Um, uh, just so everyone knows the process, first of all, those would have to go through the compliance model that does not include, that is not the. Ever a community's responsibility in doing zoning to look at, do soil tests or any other type of. Engineering or that type of with respect to parcels when zoning happens. Um, but that there's a compliance model as Emily laid forth, certain districts have to be a minimum size. They can't be, they have to be developable and they can't be excluded land. Um, they would have to fit and there is a very extensive. Spreadsheet compliance model, which is in fact publicly available on the state's website for MBTA communities. And so that is why the town had to get a, a grant, a technical grant to get an engineering firm to actually make sure that the parcels could comply. So if another parcel or parcels were proposed, um, they would need to go through uh, the compliance module process with the outside consultant. Um, revised zoning would have to be prepared and meant like, so the existing zoning bylaw as proposed. Would have to be my, assuming these other parcels were, the, the board felt those were appropriate or more appropriate. Um, would be proposed, the zoning would be rewritten. Um, and it would be starting over from scratch. The warrant article would have to go up to the select board. They would have to vote to reopen the warrant. And submit a new zoning amendment that would be sent down to the planning board. The planning board would have to advertise that again, legal notice. Um, at least two weeks in advance of the hearing. So from a timing perspective. It, that, that, that's not, may or may not be possible depending on. A locating parcels, rewriting the zoning, getting the consultant to put them back through the compliance model. Um, but it might involve having hearings right up to town meeting and, and a recommendation from this, from the advisory committee on the floor of town meeting. So that's, that's the reality of what the timing is right now. Um, but again, the, the plan, the planning board's role is to look, to take this input as they're doing, as Kevin mentioned. And then to determine whether or not a particular article as proposed should go forward. As proposed should be modified within its scope and right now the scope are these parcels. Um, or if it, they would recommend that it not move forward and, and those are the legal options on, on the table right now for the planning board.
But as of right now, just, just a quick follow-on question here. So as of right now, the plan is to take this option or what I see as the only option and go forward with it?
No, the plan, so, so, I mean, it's all this is on the line. So this, I mean, when we do our zoning discussions every year, we talk about zoning articles and the same process happens. We kind of, you know, we have the proposed zoning article. And we look at it and we either put, we break a recommendation and move forward. We make a recommendation that if not, not move forward. Um, and Susan's just describing here to change the parcel, there would have to be kind of a, you know, some more involved processes. That's what the communities act requires. That's separate from kind of the planning board here. We're having these discussions at this time and this is always the discussion we have around zoning. Obviously, this is, you know, very impactful and much more meaningful. You know, in, in certain ways and we're welcoming these discussions. Um, but. What's on the table for us is to look at this and say, we make a recommendation for this set of parcels, you know, the shipyard and here or not, and, and that's really what the planning board's options are. Thank you. Uh, J H, please go ahead.
Hi, how are you? My name's Jennifer. I live at twenty Woodlock Road. Um, I just wanted to chime in. Um, I don't know how far this will go, but I have three young children. I've lived in the neighborhood now for just under four years. And just want to echo all the comments that have been heard, but this would be truly horrific for this neighborhood from a community feel standpoint. As well as from a financial standpoint. So please don't do this. It really will hurt the neighborhood and the town overall. I'm very active at Plymouth River School as well, which is just around the corner and I want to echo the comments on the traffic situation here in the morning. Both at French Street as well as at Plymouth River. It's really a problem and we've had, God forbid, many accidents with children over at the school and I would really. I, I don't even know what to say, but there will be major traffic implications over by French Street and it won't be positive. So from a, a mom's standpoint with young kids in the community who moved here for the community, that this has been for me for the last five years. Putting this over by French Street of what you're describing would be truly horrific. It really will not be positive and you will see a lot of people move out of the neighborhood. So it really will hurt the town in more ways than I think you can imagine. So just wanted to put that out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Alyssa Thorvaldsen?
Hi, I'm Alyssa Thorvaldsen from nine Stonegate Lane. Um, and I had a couple of questions relating to compliance. Um, one is that we need to have seventy-five percent within a half mile of the transit stations and given that the cove is only. Within half mile at the edge of the parcel, does that um, fully count? And would we be meeting our seventy-five percent within the half mile um, with our plan now with the cove being outside?
Emily, I'll let you touch on that. Please go ahead. That's a good question.
Um, yep, we, we have, I, I believe it's approximately um, eighty-five percent of our proposed district. Is located within that half mile radius. The cove and all nine-ish acres of it count because the radius touches its front property line. Um, and the State Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities um, did verify that for us earlier in the process.
Thank you. And my other question is, um, part of that parcel or, um, it looks like the part that's um. Proposed for rezoning had multiple parcels and one of those parcels looks like it's a wetland from the street. And would that be out of compliance? Um, would that be excluded land and not be able to be counted?
Emily, go ahead.
Yep, sorry, Alyssa. Alyssa, I just accidentally muted you. So if you have more follow-up, just unmute yourself. Um, I didn't mean to do that. Uh, yes, the, the wetland resource area portion of it would be excluded, but I believe all those parcels have some component of a blend. Um, that qualifies.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Perkins, please go ahead.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, Tim Perkins, one Brookfield Way. And um, let's see, I'm about six hundred feet, front door and my land is about two hundred feet. Been here for thirty-three years. Um, before a district, a couple of quick questions and a quick comment just for input as one who has. Spent my share of my life at the bottom of Manatee trying to get out on French Street, left or right. Um, AJ Spirito's trucks have never been an issue. There aren't enough of them coming through. So there's no issue with AJ's trucks. Based on what he uses the site for, how he uses it, how he enters, how he exits. So those, for those of you who think that we might be switching, trading up. From, you know, two hundred and forty plus cars to AJ's trucks. AJ's trucks have been great for the last thirty-three years and I think they're gonna be great for however long he chooses, uh, chooses to be there. Um, I, it sounds like here the T's hemming us in. For those of us who really didn't want the rail to begin with, would rather have gone with the rails to trail. And not have to deal with all this. We got it anyway. Um, so we've, you know, we're not in our backyard, it's in our backyard. Okay. Um, and also having property taken from us from uh, domain from the T. Um, it sounds like the way that they've written this legislation really is hemming us in. That it's not really spread out across the town. It's gotta be X number of miles from this station or that station and. These kinds of parcels and that kinds of parcel. It really sounds like they've done their best to hem everybody in along the lines. So I'm interested in A, what are, have our elected officials who theoretically control the T and make the laws and change the laws? What have they counseled us on and what our options are here? Are they stepping up to truly represent us or are they stepping back? One question. Um, and the second one is, um. Uh, what are you doing? Have you talked to other towns? What are the towns doing? What are they doing? How are they approaching it? You know, I hear certain towns are doing it different ways. We just heard from a gentleman who talked about how it's being done in Cohasset. Is there some kind of cohesive strategy where they said this works, this doesn't work? We understand every parcel's different, every town is different, but. Putting things together as a, as a council across the towns might give you some coping mechanisms uh, in order to, to deal with this. And finally, I'm wondering if AJ Spirito has ever considered uh, Spirito Park? I think it'd be a wonderful addition to, to Brewer Woods. Uh, in a conservative, conservatorship uh, type of deal. So just saying, with that, I'll just let you respond to the two questions. Thank you.
Emily, do you want to respond on the, kind of the, the local official outreach? I can personally, I have not talked to any local officials on this.
Yep. Um, yeah, the town administration has been in close contact with our um, representative, uh, the state senator. Um, Tom Mayo, the town administrator, also sent a letter um, early in the process, even before that initial public meeting with the select board to introduce. Um, the byright multifamily zoning requirements. Um, that, you know, it, it's available online. So if folks are interested in reading um. Where Hingham started um, in its uh, approach to these requirements. Um, that, that provides some good context. Um, it in large part argued with the fact that. Um, the, the town initially was miscategorized as a bus community. Um, the, the state did correct that for Hingham and other similar um, communities. And um, said in large part that, you know, as we've discussed, discussed this evening, that Hingham had already met the spirit of the law. In large part by permitting, you know, through a different mechanism, a special permit or comprehensive permit, a significant amount of multifamily zoning. Um, that did not get traction. The state um, continues to say that we, we need. The zoning capacity even if we've already generated the, the production on the ground. Um, so.
So, so those of us who, uh, those, those people that we represent who are the state in guiding the MBTA and passing the laws. They would certainly wouldn't mind hearing from us in our opinion on uh, how. This particular bill or law is written and how restrictive it appears to be and what a leash it's put on. Uh, on, on you and on all of us in terms of, of its compliance. And it doesn't seem to be any, uh. It's forcing these kinds of decisions when there could be better decisions out there to be had.
Yeah.
Right? That's a possibility.
Tim, I appreciate the second part of your question about whether there's been a regional um, dialogue uh, to see how other communities are addressing this. Um, we participate in, you know, monthly luncheon learns, a, a number of. Uh, workshops offered by uh, the Mass Housing Partnership or the Citizens Housing and um, Planning Agency, the regional planning agencies. But we've also participated in a number of um, local uh, community meetings. Um, local uh community meetings um with representatives of situat. Cohasset, um, the South Shore Coalition more broadly, we're speaking to Rockland. Um, as you noted, there's, you know, the the law applies in different, you know. It it's kind of this top-down approach, um, even though based on the type of MBTA community. Um, a town or city is, uh, the particulars may be different. The state then allows communities to kind of shape. Where their districts are located, what their design and dimensional standards would be. So there's all different types of um approaches we're finding.
You might, you might benefit from talking to Weymouth and Branchery and Quincy and Milton and getting up the line where it gets more congested. Because um unlike you say, they've got, they're gonna have a tighter um area trying to get those big parcels. So, you know, that's, there could be some, could be some um nuggets there. So, thank you. I I appreciate the, I appreciate that. We can do better. As I, you know, as I said in my letter, I think we can do better. And we couldn't just, you know, we really need to dig in here and. We can, whatever we could do to help. Great, but I think we can do, have a better outcome, still meets the spirit of the law. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, Renee Mildrum?
Hello. Um, so I, my name is Renee Mildrum and I live at seventy-six Manatee Road. And um my husband and I and family have been here for thirty years. So seen a lot as far as in the area of where we live. And so to your point of asking um our concerns, uh specifically. My concern is um PRS and as far as, you know. It's very congested there. A lot we've had historically in our neighborhood, our bus stop has never had less than twenty-one kids at it. And they ride their bikes and that's a horrible intersection. And just worried about. The influx of potentially more kids, more families and in intersections, it's not safe to begin with. And just. A few years ago, that poor child that was um hit right in front of PRS. So that's one of, like, probably the major concern. And then I have another question about um the zoning. So. Correct me if I'm wrong. The rezoning that we're here to like say potentially we rezone that. So we rezone that area and then it doesn't meet the perk requirements or. You know, something happens, does that area stay rezoned forever? Or is it just for this one particular project?
I'll endeavor to answer the last question. Um, so on on the second point, the rezoning is an overlay district that, you know, is in place. Uh, whether or not a site meets a perk test in your example, or you know, the soils or the wastewater, whatever it may be, um, i- i- is not. You know, we're here, you know, is not really relevant to whether or not it stays in overlay district where this, you know, this density of zoning is allowed. Um, that would be a limiting factor on how big a project could be built, certainly, and you know, and and as it as it is on a lot of sites, but it doesn't change kind of the designation of the zoning law. Visibly, the MBTA Communities Act. Does that answer the question?
It does. And then I just have, I just have um another question. What have, what are the ramifications? If you know, um, the ramifications if we don't do it, like. Is it, how much money are we talking about for the town? Where does that money be distributed? Do you even know that? I was just wondering potentially, like, if we're late, if we don't decide, if we need more time and we don't comply. What, what, A, what happens and B, how much money are we talking about?
Absolutely. That's, look, I think all the board has kind of thought about what what not compliance would be and um. I'm not advocating for that in any way. I think as a general matter, we should try to comply with the laws, but um it's certainly valid questions. Emily, you can touch on the financial. You know, the the other aspect that's out there that, you know, Susan Murphy touched on earlier, that just the process is a bit of an unknown. You know, the Attorney General's office has been very aggressive in in at least in posturing enforcement and in, you know, ensuing towns and. You know, really putting towns on notice that it's going to aggressively pursue enforcement of this. So I think there is that factor there that we just, you know, I I don't have any more insight than anybody else does. On what that will look like. Um, so that it does hang over this discussion a bit, separate from the finances, at least it weighs on me a bit.
Um, and, yeah, and do you know, it, and I, I completely understand that. Because the government can posture and say, this is what we're gonna do and this is what's gonna happen. I was just wondering, like, so currently we don't know. Potentially what our fine would be or what would would happen if we don't comply. And then I think Emily was. Kind of answer as far as like, do you know how much um funding?
Yeah.
We would lose.
Um, so it varies uh based on community needs. And as you know, after the override, those. Community needs are greater perhaps than they have been in the past. Um, when we started the the analysis, uh, we did a five-year look back of the more limited grant programs. That we had accessed, uh, as I mentioned in the presentation, that the list has grown um since we started the analysis. But at that time, um, from uh the housing toys program and some of the other discretionary. Uh, programs administered through what was DHCD, now HLC. Um, it was somewhere around three hundred thousand dollars in the last um five years. Um, it longer ago, we had accessed Mass Works, that that is the um potential biggest funding program. That's on the list um of uh, you know, if that you wouldn't be eligible for any longer if you're non-compliant. Um, we use that to, or its predecessor, P Wed, um, for improvements to Shipyard Drive. Um, also some traffic improvements on Derby Street that amount to approximately a million dollars each. Um, and then we learned recently that the Weir River Water System intends to access that program, Mass Works. Um, to the tune of about four million dollars um in the next couple of years for infrastructure improvements.
Thank you, Emily. That's helpful.
Thank you. That, that was, those were the only questions that I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Mildrum. Uh, Mr. Donnelly, please go ahead. I just might have lost him, Mr. Donnelly, wherever you went.
No, I'm here. Hold on. Sorry. Um, I'm Tom Donnelly. I live at ninety-eight Manatee Road um here in town. And I do appreciate you folks uh having this meeting and um uh, you know, talking to uh the people who live in this neighborhood. You know, and you, 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 the, it's been mentioned many times that there have been multiple meetings on this subject. Um, you know, but if you look back at the agendas, this is the first meeting and we asked, I was on the call last week. And we explicitly asked for the parcels to be mentioned. And this past weekend, I walked around the neighborhood and talked to a number of uh my neighbors. And. Only one person actually heard of um this uh being proposed. Um, you know, through outreach of the neighborhood. Otherwise, everyone I walked, I spoke to, knocked on their door and had a few minutes with, nobody knew about this. So I would just, even though we say that these were posted. And, you know, we all can sometimes have this bias that we think we're communicating, but we're communicating to our our little groups. And if I just ask the committee if they'd be kind enough to um, when posting things. Having addresses, parcels, whatever the appropriate term is, so people know the actual areas being affected. And in a uh, the spirit of transparency. Um, there's a lot of talk about work that has been done um to rule out other areas. Would that work product be available to share or post on a uh the public website? So we can see why certain parcels were considered, but then not um acceptable? Is that possible?
Emily, do you want, do you want to address that? I don't know in what form there were, you know, the the the, uh, the right word is, the the consultant's report appears. Whether or not that's a postable item.
Yeah, um, well, the consultant um ran at the. The districts that we were guided um to explore by the select board and the planning board this past summer. Through the compliance model. Um, prior to that, it was more of um. A staff level working group that used the town's online GIS. To identify where excluded areas were located, environmentally sensitive areas. Um, and those other types of constraints we spoke about earlier. Um, the town's webpage does include um a a link to the online GIS, so you could do something similar. Uh, we didn't, you know, some.
But there's no document. The, I I've spent actually a lot of time um over the past two weeks or week, excuse me. Going on that uh, the map. And, you know, this actually one of my last questions was. Um, at the end of the day. If portion of this is to um, and I I I'm all in support of, you know, house of, you know, more housing for people. We all need to live somewhere. But there doesn't seem as if we looked at this also as an economic benefit of developing. You know, back when we had the Hingham Journal, they used to talk quite a bit about development of South my, um, South Hingham. Um, you know, and multi-use, you know, where people can work, live. And uh recreate all in the same area. And it just, I feel that that wasn't part of the um. Um, uh, what we looked into doing. And it feels like we may have, you know, we're now saying that this is, it's either this or we're gonna have to go to town meeting and vote on it. So it it kind of feels like it's a um a fait accompli. And we may have squandered an opportunity to actually move town forward. Um, and my last question is, oh, can we see the compliance model? Is that posted somewhere where we can actually see what, you know, each lot that was put into it and the spreadsheet or the report that was generated by that?
Yeah, um, yeah, it's, we we're still in the process of verifying that it's accurate. Um, but but we do have a draft of it available and I'm I'm happy to share it. Or Tom, if you'd like to go over the online GIS. You're welcome to set up a meeting and I can show you, you know, some of the considerations that we we went through in the earlier analysis.
Okay, but I I appreciate the invitation. I'm gonna be traveling for the next two weeks for work, so I might not be able to take you up on that. But it feels like this is, I I believe someone said that, you know, the warrant's written. So that means French Street's on the warrant. So our only recourse at this juncture is either vote up or down at town meeting. Am I correct in that assumption?
Uh, no, Susan, I think we can go back through this. That's not, that's not quite correct. And and that, you know, this process, where we are. In this is is where zoning should be at this point is is the public hearing, is to get this feedback and to think about it. It's not to say at all, and I don't mean to suggest at all that. That there's not the opportunity for the, you know, for for further discussion, for changing, you know, for the for the planning board itself to say this is not the right parcel. For the Board of Selectmen to uh to say, no, the planning board's recommendation, if you have no word to recommend, is not the right parcel for advice, you'd agree with that. You know, it kind of goes through that process. I think Susan was describing to you earlier that if, you know, the 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 posted notice has been to this parcel. For us to substitute another parcel, we'd have to go through kind of the posted notice and hearing process again.
But it was just posted this week is the first time French Street was posted.
No, that that's not quite accurate.
It, the agenda said the MBTA. So unless you dug into what the actual agenda was. Then you would find out. But an agenda item of the MBTA um compliance is a rather broad thing. And all I'm saying, Mr. Ellis, is for these types of things, that the, and I think part of the reason why people are upset is they feel blindsided.
But look, that's clearly noted and understood. And that's, I mean, I'm not, I mean, that's a point well taken and understood. And I understand completely. How you'd feel that way. And I'm I'm sympathetic to it. That's certainly not the planning board's intent. It is not my intent. I mean, I live in the same town as everyone on this call, right?
I'm just, and as I believe I said, we all have a habit of understanding what we're talking about when we're working on something. And always trying to get the, your constituency involved. You know, I have the same, I do the same thing at work sometimes.
Mister Donnelly, if you want to push back, the planning board has been talking about this concept, the MBTA Communities Act, and going through some of this compliance for, I. I don't get me wrong, I think eight different meetings, maybe over the course of like seven, eight, nine months. And we have been talking about this for quite a lot of time. Um.
But none with the address until we asked last week. If you go back and watch Zoom from last week, it was. The group admitted that it was the first time this parcel was explicitly mentioned.
It was explicitly called out on the agenda.
Yeah, it was part of the legal ad.
Yeah, there was a legal ad.
All been posted on the website.
In December, they were published twice. Um, I believe there was more than one article in the Hingham Anchor about it. Um, so the the process um is, as I was discussing earlier. The Warren article deadline was December first. So that was submitted December first. That's, but that's the, and then the legal ads were put in.
Susan, I understand.
The hearings, so that.
I understand that. That that's, I understand you fulfilled the legal obligation, but I'm just telling you, walking around my neighborhood. Not one person knew of the French Street uh inclusion of this. You know, that's all I I I wanted to, you know, share. So I, it helps to give some uh color. To why maybe some people are a little upset.
Yeah, absolutely. Understandable.
Okay, thank you.
Jim Dresser, twenty-four French Street, uh forty-year resident of my home. I'd like to make a comment.
Please go ahead.
Okay, I'd like to share actually two comments. Um, first is uh that Hingham, it it appears Hingham is providing. Commuters for the East Weymouth Station. That might want to be East Weymouth's problem. This area, also this area is that you're contemplating here is wholly on upon a former pond. Known as Hayward's Pond, used to have a nice house on it. The town of Hingham really should know that. I mean, I've only lived here forty years and I know it. And uh, and lastly, um, I asked earlier about the participants of this meeting being provided with a link. To this recording as, I gotta be honest with you, um, Harbor Media doesn't put them up in any way timely. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dresser. Uh, I just see an iPhone with the hand raised. I'm not sure who that is. Please go ahead and state your name after the record. All right, not seeing that. Gina Marie Jamison?
Hi, I'm Gina. I'm here with my hus- I husband Casey. We just moved to Three Chatham Circle. Um, I just have some questions about um. The overarching goal of today's conversation and how the feedback that you're hearing will be taken under consideration. I'm I'm sensing some confusion from some of the participants and I myself am feeling that confusion. With um how the presentation that we saw and the responses you're being given to it are being, going to be processed. Um, Tom just said, uh, you know, it sounds like French Street is on the warrant. And uh, Mr. Ellis, you said that, no, no, not quite. So. When we're, when we're having these discussions, how is the feedback that the community participants are giving now? Going to be folded in to the planning board? Will Emily be taking any of this feedback under consideration? And coming up with a, you know, broad new plan or is Emily's plan set? And then we are giving feedback in addition to that. And that um bundle of ingredients, Emily's plan, the feedback that goes to the planning board? How, how ultimately is all of this fitting together?
Sure, that's a perfectly reasonable question, a great question. So I I can speak for myself. As a member of the planning board, my goal is to get the public feedback, to understand what the concerns are. And to, you know, incorporate that feedback into thinking about the appropriateness of, you know, this potential zone. And and whether or not this is the right, um, I I use the word lot broadly, you know, like right, right lot. For compliance for the town with the MBTA Community Zoning Act. And and that's what I'm looking for. I'm looking for feedback. I'm looking for, you know, pu- public comment to that. I'm looking for assessment. And that and that is what I'm gonna use, at at least partly to inform my judgment about whether or not this is an appropriate lot. I I don't want to speak for my colleagues, but that's what the board's tasked with doing. And and that's what we're inviting. We want that discussion. We have this about all our zoning articles. Obviously, this is a big one. And, you know, I I expect that we'll talk about this again. I'm I'm very confident, actually, we'll talk about this again. I don't think next week, but. Perhaps the week after, you know, we'll talk about the end of the meeting, when it would be good to engage in this conversation again. Um, there are causes that we do have some permitting applications and we do have some other zoning we do need to discuss, but. That's what I see as the process. So taking this feedback, thinking about it, um, you know, giving staff some more comments, things we'd like them to look at, things we'd like them to explore for us. And then having a follow-on conversation, like probably in a couple of weeks' time is probably the, you know, the next potential meeting.
So to level set, just for myself and our other participants here, that this is not a situation where we are saying. You know, I have learned this, I feel this way, these are my concerns, and that goes to. You know, I have learned this, I feel this way, these are my concerns, and that goes to Emily to redesign her plan, correct? And Emily has fulfilled her task. She's done her deliverable. This is the, this is the proposal. And now that is what's going to the board along with the feedback, parallel to the feedback, correct?
Uh, it's not quite that way. I mean, Emily is, you know, Emily's the executive planning for the town, so that, you know, she she's working for the talent to do that. I'll let Susan jump in here a bit about the process again, because it's, the warrant process is just, well, very.
So just for some clarifications and everybody understands everyone's role again, I'm special real estate counsel for the town. Um. The state put forth the mandate, the guidelines, the parameters, the restrictions, I think, as um. Um, you know, I believe it might have been um Mr. Donald, was it, or one of our um speakers there spoke very eloquent. To the box that the um that the state has put all communities in that are subject to this. And there was the staff analysis that involved GIS, Conservation Officer, a lot of people in Town Hall. To try to apply all of these various factors. Um, in order to come up with a proposal. Those proposals were presented by the staff. To the Select Board and the Planning Board at a public meeting that was televised. In which these parcels were put forward. And it was requested whether or not the staff should then proceed to draft the zoning, do the compliance model, et cetera. Based on the information that those two boards had at that time. Staff was proposed to put together the zoning amendment article. That zoning amendment article. Then was voted by the Planning Board to be submitted. To the um for consideration for these hearings to happen and then potential consideration at town meeting. It's not Emily's plan. It was never Emily's plan. It was a proposal of parcels. That were assembled by staff and reviewed and moved forward by the Planning Board and the Select Board. Um, so I just want to make sure that everybody understands what everybody's roles are here. Um, so that it, you know, it's not to a point that um Kevin made earlier. That there's not kind of. Pointing fingers or saying, you know, that something was the staff's doing or someone else's doing. So that's the process. It was put forward and as Kevin has spoken too many times, the point of the hearing process is to get the public input. For the Planning Board to make a determination and make a recommendation whether or not the zoning article should go forward in its current form or not. And that's where we are right now.
Thank you so much for that clarification, Susan. We we just moved here three days ago. So we um we weren't even aware that this was happening. Um, I I think I have to thank. Tom and and Christopher for um the the Facebook notifications that we got about this and the letters in the mailbox. Otherwise, we wouldn't have known. So I apologize for not quite understanding the process. And I uh I appreciate the clarification for everything. Thank you so much.
Yeah, and and zoning, I just so everyone knows, I sat on the planning board for eleven years, many years ago. So I I've been on that side table. I'm now in the council role for the last number of years. Zoning is, can be complicated enough on its own. And then when you overlay the state mandate, which was not something that the town or this planning board would have brought forward on their own. If not mandated by the state, obviously, it just becomes even more complicated. So. Um, you know, that's why we were trying tonight to try to lay out the process and what went into it. Um, in a more clear fashion. Um, and hopefully we've accomplished some of that, even though we understand there's still a lot of concerns.
Thank you, Susan. Um, we'll go back to the iPhone. I'm I'm not sure who that is, but.
Hi, thank you. I was technically challenged.
That's not a problem.
My name is Lisa Hennessy. I'm at Seven Stone Gate Lane. And thank you for all the work that you guys have put into this so far. Um, I was um listening to Emily right in the beginning. You mentioned that the um. Little sub lot, whatever that was called, doesn't have to be necessarily in our town. Is that, is that correct? Did I hear that correctly?
Um, close. The the transit station doesn't have to be located in the town, so we have some station area in Hangham proper. That falls within a half mile of East Waymouth and the Cohasset commuter rail stations. Um, so those little slippers, um, we also.
Okay. Cause I know, um, I, okay, so that probably just negates what I was thinking, but because I use the East Waymouth train station. And I was, I know that there's been some planning going on of a lot of housing going on in Waymouth there. And I'm, I was thinking kind of optimistically, why don't we, why don't we snag some of those buildings?
Do a joint lane, yeah.
Yeah, um, but okay, so my other comment is the um. In the opposite direction of Plymouth River School, the bend of road. That goes right over the tracks, that um area is, as you know, has no sidewalks. Um, and it's, I've actually walked over there and I've been hit almost twice. Walking along there. And I was just wondering with the infrastructure, who pays for? Um, the upgrades and the safety of that when this happens. There's, are just something to think about. Um, and then my other comment is, um, have we considered what a lot of is happening in Boston? It's the repositioning, and I think somebody might have talked about it, but I think it's a a great creative solution to. Consider repositioning vacant commercial buildings um and approach real estate owners or developers for. Um, for maybe considering rezoning those areas.
Thank you. That's, that's a great suggestion. Um, on the sidewalks, I mean, I. So I'm not in charge of putting town sidewalks in. Uh, as much as the planning board would sometimes like to just be able to do that. Uh, but when we look at the projects, oftentimes we are committed when we do subdivisions and we do um presidential, you know, uh, you know, groupings to building sidewalks. We often ask um people to put sidewalks, even in cul-de-sacs where there's no adjoining sidewalks, on the theory that building out the sidewalk structure in the in the town. Only benefits a town, even if it's piecemeal and and approach by approach. So we would expect, I mean, you know, so long as I'm on the planning board. We would certainly request that the applicant that sidewalks be built. And some of our, some of our zoning is required, depending on what's built, and sometimes it's not. But here, I think we'd certainly expect sidewalks connecting, whether or not that means there's sidewalks additionally on French Street. That's a different story. It might be outside of the zone. We can't ask the applicant to do that. You know, that's more on the town to do. But we are trying to build out the sidewalk network as we move forward with our projects.
Okay, so that's just another, another expense of the town for this. Correct?
Well, it wouldn't be an expense of the town related to this zoning per se, but the sidewalks in general would be an expense of the town where they're not connected to kind of another project. Emily or, you know, Susan, you can talk to a bit more about some of those sidewalks and develop, but where the planning board controlled that process, we certainly are pushing for sidewalks in all the developments. And and subdivisions where we have that authority. I mean, that it goes, that is absolutely the case.
Okay, thanks.
Absolutely. Uh, Mr. Matthews, please go ahead.
Sorry, Kevin, uh, had on mute. Um, so. I just wanted to focus on some of the environmental issues. Yeah, Ted Matthews at one oh two Hershey Street, uh, from speaking. Partially for, as the Bear Cove Park Committee, then on the committee for fifteen years. Um, this area uh on French and Fort Hill um is a parcel that's. Abuts the um Waymouth Back River AC EC, which is nine hundred fifty acres in Hangham and Waymouth. That is an area of critical environmental concern. Obviously, we've been encroaching on this thing for forty-two years. Uh, nineteen eighty-two, it was put into this, uh, the state agreed um to include it in their list. Properties that have this designation um out in the Fresh River goes through this property. And empties into the title uh salt marshes, which are about two hundred acres of salt marsh out there. In the summertime, we've got. Um. Uh, you know, uh, all kinds of birds. Um, we've got a herring run of three hundred fifty thousand herring that go up into Whitman Pond. Um, so I'm just concerned, you know, that you're, you're talking about putting some type of a um. Of a sewer plant in there, uh, and that it would affect the Fresh River in a more detrimental way than it is affected currently. Uh, with, you know, drainage from the, from the town dump and and uh some of those other properties up in there. That's it. That's what I have for you.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. Um, I want to clarify, I'm not supposing putting that there. I'm just saying that the, any applicant that coming in to do a development. Would need to account for the, um, you know, the wastewater and that would have to pass through the Border Health and pass through Conservation Commission. So, you know, it would would fall within, at least what the town has set forth as its kind of requirements for those facilities.
Sure, yeah, just um to clarify a little bit more, Moore Brewer, Moore Brewer Park is in the AC EC. Bear Cove Park are in the AC EC and Bear Cove Park comes right up to the back of the uh Spirito's property that's on the marsh. So. Uh, and then, of course, the uh property along French Street. Is uh abutting that AC EC. And there have been other projects that have been, uh, you know, deemed to be in too close proximity to AC ECs where we haven't moved forward. With these types of uh multi-use. Uh, heavy density projects. And I appreciate you listening to me tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. Absolutely. Uh, Mr. Roth, please go ahead.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Ellis. Uh, Jonathan Roth is Stone Gate. Uh, I just wanted to circle back. Um. You know, I I would just ask the the planning board to introspectively think about, you know, the site that they're, that they're, you know. Ultimately choosing for this. If we, if I, if I go to the Mass Gov website, uh, you know, around three A. Um, you know, some of the requirements uh that they're looking for is, you know, housing near local shops that we go every day, restaurants. Uh, and and specifically saying increasing mobility and utilization of public transit, reducing reliance on single occupancy vehicles. Um, this location does, does not really do that. Uh, it from, from eligible locations under section forty A. Uh, it talks about um areas that by virtue of their infrastructure, uh, underutilized facilities. Make it highly suitable for residential mixed-use uh growth of zoning districts. Uh, con- areas of concentrated development, including town and city centers or other existing commercial districts. So I think that, I think the planning board has some introspection to do about, you know, how this site needs that that criteria. Um, uh, Ms. Ellis specifically, I think it came up earlier in terms of Hangham's, uh, you know, own character bylaws. Um, it was brought up that this obviously would not meet the the neighborhood. And I think you you had commented that that was, you know, duly noted. I was hoping you could expand upon, you know, to you what that means and 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 how you actually consider. Um, you know, reconciling uh this kind of diverging facts and circumstances.
Yeah, so that 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 um that factor is part of the cycling review. And and I understand completely why people are thinking about it here. And it makes makes perfect sense to me. Um, I mean, just, it's impossible to comment on any specific project without seeing a product, right? Because part of that cycling review is looking at a product brought in front of us and saying, you know, as one of the factors of the cycling review, does it meet that standard? Um, and that we evaluate it based on that. And we have a discussion around that. And I, you know, people on the call last week and the discussion about this last week, you can see that we think a lot about that. And we push for that, um, you know, all of us, I think, you know, we have different, you know, thoughts about it perhaps, but we all push for that and what we think it means. And helping shake these projects. So it's, it's just really hard to comment on without seeing a project. But I understand, you know. I understand your, your point that a high-density unit doesn't fit in a single-family residential area, uh, you know, on its face. But you you know, when we looked at the site, at least as thinking about why it might be suitable, is that it's a residential neighborhood and this would be more residential housing. You know, and it would comport with all the residential housing requirements that that are obligated to be in that area. So that's the starting point for how it fits. And then we look at the product that's proposed and go from there. Um, and it's really the best I can offer you. And I'm not trying to evade the question anyway at all. But, you you know, the standards apply based on the product that's presented to us, not kind of on the zoning that generally allows a certain use.
It has to be.
I might be not.
It's gonna be two and a half stories high.
Um, so I just, just to follow up, um, question, i- i- and I guess I'm just a little disappointed. You know, I think there were some great suggestions around, you know, maybe rezoning some vacant commercial space. Which may be, you know, a lot closer to, you know, which fits the bill for um underutilized facilities and something that might be closer to. Um, restaurants and things like that. So like, uh, I'm disappointed, like, if we're taking notes on that today, like, why, like, why today? It seems like there's been a lot of due diligence, you know, and work done up to this point. Um, you know, that a lot of the residents on on this call have been unaware of, but but why, why is that news, you know, here, as we sit here in January twenty-nine?
Understood. Um, I mean, again, I can let Emily go through some kind of evaluation, the process, but just one of the places where we started was that we were trying not to. You know, at least when we looked at suitable sites, trying not to take commercially zoned property and converting into residential. So we're starting with areas that we're looking at and saying, this isn't a residential area and this does fit, you know, that criteria. I understand the point that that's a criteria that you laid out that's not required. Um, and it's not something that I I impose. It's something that when, when staff going through this, looked at it, it was a kind of a starting point for them. But you were seeking that feedback and looking for those comments. And, you know, that that's the best I can answer that question, kind of how we got here. Um, you know, I understand that. You're here on the twenty-seven, but you know, the staff has been looking at this for, you know, over a year now, I mean, years now since this law was first passed. So it's not. It's not new in the sense of going through the process to try to identify sites. Um, I I just want to emphasize that again and again, that. You know, I I under- I understand completely the point that this is the first that some people on this call are hearing about this. And we and we do deal with that. I'm really sympathetic to that, because I can imagine how I'd react. But it has been a bitter process that town has gone through for quite some time to try to get us to this point where we're thinking about parcels.
A- a- and just, just maybe lastly here, um. You know, in terms of the commercial, you know, where we start, our starting point that you just mentioned is literally direct opposite from where Cohasset started. And it was mentioned that we did lunch and learns with Cohasset. So I'm trying to better understand how we ended up in a completely opposite situation. Uh, from our neighboring town, which is, you know, pretty similar to us in in many ways. You know, how do we have, you know, completely opposite uh approaches to this? Um, I I'd appreciate some clarity on that.
Emily, are you suited to answer that question? Because I I'm, I'm, I don't have any awareness, you know, kind of really, you know, beyond what's reported, what Cohasset's doing.
Yeah, I I mean, my, just my best guess, I mean, when you look at it proportionately, Cohasset has to zone for seventy. Uh, excuse me, seven hundred and fifty multifamily housing units. Um, their population is so much lesser than ours. I think they were, you know. It was maybe going to be more difficult for them to scatter it around their principally residential um zoning districts. And it may just be easier for them to look. Um, oh. Am I making that up, Susan? Can you correct me if I'm wrong after nine o'clock at night? Are they, they're actually not an adjacent community, but because their population is so low, they still only had to do the seven hundred and fifty units. Okay. Sorry, technical correction. Um, so it's just a, you know, bigger share um. Of units against their twenty twenty housing units um than Hangham had to deal with. So they they approached it a little bit differently.
Yeah, and and Kevin, the other part of that, and I just want to know, so I'm counsel, when I look at any questions for the town. I'm looking at legal compliance, legal impact, that part. But in my role, I was part of a lot of the conversations that happened. And um, to the extent, you know, there's, there's probably a bigger policy conversation that's. Beyond this meeting than, and beyond, you know, this planning board discussion, which is. Um, and I think, Kevin, I don't know if you mentioned it, uh, someone did about the override and the pressures of different costs and, you know. That people can see the discussions going on in town about costs of different departments and whether it's schools or roadways or. Plowing the streets or water pipe spray, whatever it is. And so, um, when in order to best fund that. Um. The the desire is to preserve or possible increase the commercial tax base. Because as a general rule, commercial uses draw on less municipal services. Schools starting with, but a number of other, a a number of other ones, maybe ambulances, other services. And so. Um, you know, one thing, and again, this is not saying that that makes this parcel the right parcel. So I'm not speaking to whether there's a right parcel, wrong parcel. I just think it's a bigger conversation. It's a policy conversation for the whole town. Um, and not just the planning board as to, um. You know, in order to maintain and grow that commercial tax base, even though it's the same rate. But it puts less demands on services. Um, you know, is it from a policy standpoint, more prudent to rezone or take away or encourage redevelopment? And turn that into residential uses that might have more demand on services or to try to preserve that and find other areas. To place the zoning. And it, and it's a, it's a complicated conversation. And I. To place the zoning and it and it's a it's a complicated conversation and I, it was undertaken. By my witnessing of the meetings that I participated in, it was taken very seriously and in very good faith. By all of the members on the staff that were having to come up with this and make those recommendations. So. I I know people are disappointed. I know the timing of hearing about things, which is completely understandable. Um, but I I think that um, you know, it would be misplaced. Belief to think that there wasn't a lot of big pictures, thinking about the town as a whole, the needs of the town as a whole. That went into this, and I think as Kevin may have mentioned, um. You know, it any anywhere that new development, particularly on in, you know. Development that's not the choice of the town happens is going to impact. Residents and neighborhoods and they may all feel the same. So I I just wanted to provide more context as someone who was. Kind of listening in on all of these, you know, conversations and working groups. As to kind of what was going into it. So people understand it was not throwing a dart at a map on the wall kind of situation, if that's, I hope that's helpful, Kevin.
Yeah, I mean, that that's very helpful. And I think, you know, I I'm just. I understand maybe like the 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 population differences or what have you, but it just to me from a a gating question of. Are we re- rezoning commercial uh residential versus not? We took the opposite approach of Cohasset. Um, which, you know, Mr. Jones, I think you just said, if you were just finding out about this, you would react differently. We we are just finding out about this, right? And so. It I, you know, I think that needs to be, you know, can taken to heart and like. There is tax base aside, like you said, it's the same rate, you know. We like rezoning a commercial space doesn't have an undue impact on residents, right? Which is why Cohasset took the approach that they did. So, you know, while the, you know, it's it's a lot easier to say, if I was finding out about this, I would feel X to actually finding out about it. So. I just would, you know, put that forth and I appreciate the time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Roth. The the it's insightful and helpful. Thank you. Uh Ms. Hunt, please go ahead.
Um, hi, it's Susanna Hunt on Blue Sky Drive, seven Blue Sky Drive. Um, literally just learned about this a couple of days ago. Um, and I guess my, it's not really a question, but it's it's a hopeful comment on uh Tom Donnelly's, one of Tom Donnelly's points. We would love to see and and I met with Emily and Michael earlier and they showed me where I was looking for something incorrectly in the wrong place. Uh for historic commission, we'd like to know where we can look for the parcels that were also thought of um. In conjunction with the Spur- Spirito land. If there's a place that you can point us to go to, then I think we'll maybe have a little better understanding of. How we all came to the conclusion that this was the best parcel to use for this point. And thank you for this open meeting. It's been great, very informational, and um that's all for me.
Thank you, Ms. Hunt. Uh Emily, I just want to make sure I don't I don't want to just set expectations. You mentioned earlier that, you know, there's no. There's a lot of internal discussions and there's no kind of um, I don't know the right word, it's like repository of like, thi- this is. Here's the six things we looked at. Here's how we went through this process. I just want to make sure I set expectations for what people should expect to find on the planning board's website. You know, recordings of the meetings, um, you know, we can reference that, you know, some of the other stuff that's located. But what what is a reasonable expectation?
Yeah, all all the former slides from the the public presentations um are available online through the community planning department's webpage. Um, one of those, when the the select board and the planning board really narrowed in on um the proposal that's. Before um us this evening, um did include a couple of backup slides that didn't have substantial discussion in them. Um, where we um highlighted a couple of properties that were ultimately um. Not considered uh for further analysis. One of them was uh is the select board parcel, again, in part because it's. Um publicly owned, so it's excluded land. Um earlier in the process, we were looking um. Under the draft regulations at due at at certain um condominium developments along Beale Street that already exist. Um, and then when the final guidelines came out, D H C D changed the way that they measure the. Half-mile radius. Um, and so those no longer were considered um transit areas. I guess more, you know, broadly, not to speak about specific parcels, but you know, we looked um in commercial corridors. Um along Whiting Street or elsewhere along three A, um where properties could be viewed as um somewhat underutilized. Uh because of uh traffic concerns. Um, and again, um issues related to. Our financial position right now, some of the goals of the master plan and the um. Sustainable Budget Task Force report, we leaned away from those commercial areas. Um, but again, I'm happy to talk with anybody about the, you know, all the myriad options that that we've looked at.
Thank you, Emily.
Sure.
Apologies, Eric Luth, please go ahead.
Thanks, Kevin. Eric Luth, thirty eighteen French Street. Um, just trying to catch up myself and I'm not sure I fully understand everything um that I've heard tonight, but. Um, are 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 we putting forward the shipyard and the French Street or is it the French Street? I'm I'm didn't quite follow that.
Sure, good question. Um Emily, go ahead. You can kind of walk through. The answer, the short answer is yes, but we can kind of walk through how how it goes.
Yeah, um, yes, there are multiple sub-districts for total. The over- overall district um consists of three main areas. Uh, the residential buildout on the shipyard east um side of the shipyard redevelopment area. Then the cove, uh which is not contiguous over off of Beale Street, and then finally the the French Street parcels that um we've heard a bit about tonight.
Okay, so and the shipyard east is is how many acres?
Um, I think it's about twenty-five. Um, I.
And was there, there was a threshold of um one property had to be a certain percentage of twenty-five acres?
Yes, wa- uh not one property, one contiguous sub-district. So when we're looking at Hewitt's Landing. Um, the Avalon Town Homes, the Avalon multifamily on Fitzroy, and then adding in the the Avalon Two, the more recent one. Um, those are all contiguous and they exceed that twenty-five acre minimum.
So then we can get the rest with anything larger than five acres?
Yeah, so the.
Is this within a half a mile or does it have to be within a half a mile?
Um, it's seventy-five percent of the district, so that's kind of a moving target, depending on how large we make the district, but seventy-five percent of it has to be within. A half mile, the remaining twenty-five percent can be outside.
Twenty, when you say twenty-five percent of the district, what does that mean? Does that mean? Um, the number of units in that district or?
Um, it's the acreage. This is, this is all related to the minimum land area. So if we have a hundred acres in our district, seventy-five of them have to be in a half mile. Twenty-five could fall without.
Okay, um, and so uh is there, I mean. It seems like that narrows it down quite a bit in terms of um minimum five-acre parcels. Um, yeah, I guess um. I would love to see a G I S that has those areas highlighted. Just as an overlay to understand um. You know, the the, I mean, it's, you know, obviously, the French Street property um very neatly wraps this thing up. Um, but it it seems like with a little more work, we might be able to identify a series of properties. It might be a little bit more work. Um. But we might get to an answer that doesn't include the French Street property. That that's that's my question, I guess. Um, um, maybe I'll 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 seek you out and see if we can study the G I S.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Thank you, Eric. Uh Rebecca Shimbada, apologies. All right, Chris, please go ahead. I, you know, I'm sure we'll come back to Rebecca.
Uh, hey, Chris Christiansen, again, uh one quill run. Uh, just want to say just some observations on what I'm hearing tonight. You know, I want to reiterate, I am all for Hingham complying with three A. I think most of us on this call are. I haven't heard anyone say anything to the contrary. It's in our best interests as a town, clearly. I feel like. Where some of the friction is perhaps is the evaluation process hasn't been extremely clear. Uh, to the public and to the extent we can bring clarity around that, I think that will help us bring. Alignment and help us to bring bring us all together around a solution. Um, Mr. Donnelly, I think Susanna Hunt both made great points. Around the need for documentation so that decision-making process has more transparency and can be audited uh to a certain, you know, by the public to a certain extent. Um, just, you know, I understand where we're at from a timing standpoint and so want the request to be reasonable and practical. I just, and I I do appreciate as well, Emily, you offering to meet with anyone. I know you and I talked last week. I appreciated that conversation. And um, you know, that you've offered to meet with anyone else. I think you're poss- possibly talking about, you know, obviously there's dozens of people on this call tonight. If this goes to uh, this article goes on the warrant for town meeting, potentially hundreds of people that might have questions. I think to the extent that we can make that evaluation process, uh, you know, what went into the compliance model, what were, I, you know, I don't know if you take like the top. Thirty or fifty parcels that were looked at with some rationale for why they ultimately didn't make the cut or the top of the list. I think that, you know, the point people of that might might help to um, you know, reduce the number of conversations and just the friction around it, right? People are saying. What about this parcel? What about that parcel? What about this option? I think, again, to the extent we can say, you know, here's the list. We looked at all these and here's kind of the rationale, the overarching framework. We use to evaluate things, some higher higher-arching principles around like commercial versus residential, but then even, you know. Yeah, I I don't know what the number, right number is, but you know, top twenty, thirty, fifty parcels. Um, it it might be a a way to help drive some alignment and and, you know, reduce some of the. Concern and friction in the community.
Sorry, I'm just taking a minute here. Um. Thank you, Chris. That's that's helpful, very helpful. Uh Rebecca Shimbada, you might be the last hand raised.
Thank you. Um, yeah, Rebecca Shimbada, one hundred Manatee Road. I've been um living here on Manatee for a couple of years. Um, before I was on Ward Street for eight years. Um, but um, for before I go into it, I just want to say thank you to the board for all that you do, because I've been to a lot of these meetings. Susan Murphy will. Probably remember me, but I'm too shy to turn on my camera at this time of night. Um, anyways. I really appreciate you listening to my friends and my neighbors' concerns. It's all obviously new to a lot of us. We just. You know, for all of these reasons, we didn't necessarily know, but now you know that we know. Um, and it's, you know, obviously something that's um. Uh, talk of the neighborhood, that's for sure. So I just wanted to ask one question. Um. Have we looked at the school bus parking lot by West Hingham Train Station?
Yeah, I I'll say quickly, we wish that would be a a possible option, but all of us do, I think. Um, Emily, you can go ahead and kind of talk about the kind of the public and 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 why it doesn't work.
Yeah, a- again, because that property is publicly owned, it's owned by the the town. Um, it's excluded land area and wouldn't qualify towards our. Minimum um zoning size.
So it's, if it's owned by the town, it doesn't qualify, but if it's owned by private property, it seems like it would be the opposite.
Yeah, thank you. So we've been asking that question for quite a bit. Yep.
Yeah, okay. Um, so. My other thought is just that it seems like in some ways we might be doing this to tick the box. And so I just have a little concerns because I, you know, having lived on Ward Street for eight years. With a forty D B development, the rules are very lenient, and I don't know what the rules are for this, if it's forty B or what, I haven't dug into it. Um, um, but the rules were lenient for like septic wetlands, the wells, um fire lanes, like you name it, the rules don't apply. Um, we don't know, in this situation, we don't know if the soil will work. We don't know the impacts of it being a dump in the past. I mean, that's crazy. We don't know it's. Um, if what the situation is with the wetlands, and we know it's wetlands. Um, how do you protect the wildlife? Um, I've been told in other zoning meetings that we have a water shortage in Hingham. Um, like drinking water, does that get impacted somehow in terms of um? I forget, was it aquifers? Um, uh, and then also there's a lack of sidewalks by the train tracks of by Ford Hill and French. I don't want to duplicate things, but that's, that's like a windy death trap. It's terrible. Um. And, you know, you're saying that we would only be able to get sidewalks for a certain area. You know, French Street now to cross, you have to cross French Street a couple of times, you know, we can't. We we know that High Street, Ward Street, French Street intersections terrible, is very dangerous with sun glare. Um, just poor visibility. So my concern is that if we're doing this to tick the box for the state and then the developer comes in, we're going to just be handcuffed into building an unsafe development that. Isn't good for the residents, the neighbors, the community. So that's just my my thought is. Uh, you know, I I don't spend my time doing all of this due diligence and I'm really appreciative of all of you guys are doing. Um, but. Can we divide it up somehow? I don't know, just seems like maybe it's not the right choice, maybe it is, I don't know, but um. That's where my thoughts are on it.
Thanks, Ms. Shimbada. I I don't want to, I mean, when Emily opened the meeting, just to just to make sure, um, and you should certainly go back and look, she kind of provided an overview, you know, I thought was a helpful slide, differences in kind of a forty B project, which, as you described, it has. If any, very least restrictions and and here where you'd have complete kind of oversight. These would be the normal town restrictions that would apply to the your development in this area. So it it would be a very different process along those lines and it's certainly something we, you know.
Yeah, but then those rules can change. I mean, here's the thing is those can change, like. Developer gets the land, sits on it for twenty years, then decides they want to develop it, and then you don't have control over it. You know, that's my concern is this is a tick-the-box exercise seems good now, but may not be when it actually comes to fruition.
I'm not sure I exactly follow um in in the sense.
I'm just saying, well, my, our experience with forty B, like, you know, the rules change, so. Whatever this is zoned for, those zoning rules can change because it's done by the state, I think. I mean, I'm not sure. I don't know.
So I understood, you're right. I I we absolutely cannot control what the state does. Uh, you know, when we put the zoning district in place, it'd be a local zoning, but. Understand your point that what the state requires for the Communities Act and compliance absolutely could change.
Yeah, and that's, so you know, you're just kind of losing control. Um, possibly. So, all right, well, thank you, guys. That's what I wanted to say. Am I last? That's amazing.
No, not quite, not quite. Uh, Mr. Ferris, please go ahead.
Hi, I'm John Ferris. I'm thirty-six French Street. I'm here with my wife, Beth. Um, you know, I I just wanted to say that um this is the. I was fortunate to hear about this. I I think I'm with a a number of other people where hadn't really heard about the French Street parcel being sort of open into this. Um, we haven't lived here for like thirty-two years and and knowing the site that we're talking about. Uh, somehow I just can't envision seeing like, you know, a hundred and twenty units there. Um, and then, you know, early on when Emily gave the presentation. You know, it says, this, does it have to be, it's going to be two and a half stories high? I just don't see how much land is there and, you know, with. The uh, you got Moore Brewer Park, you got some wetlands over there, you have the the old dump site, how, you know. Um, I guess are those height restrictions like this two and a half, would that pertain if even if something got developed there? Or would that be uh, you know, I just can't see how anybody's going to squeeze a hundred and twenty units there. It just, i- i- it just doesn't seem to be an appropriate place. I certainly don't think it's appropriate. I certainly wouldn't like it there. And I guess as I throw out one other thing, you know, having worked in town government for a while, understanding some of the warrant process. Knowing how Massachusetts, you know, does their business, um, you know, and if they don't have money, they don't do something, or even though their laws may say they have to. You know, I was wondering like if if a lot of people here feel like we need to do more evaluation, find more parcels or look more uh more sites throughout the town. So I would like sort of throw out the idea of what is the risk of missing December of twenty twenty-four? And taking up the issue next year. I mean, what's the likelihood of our penalties and the A G coming to Hingham and getting us within a year? When, you know, they seem to delay everything anyhow. So, you know, we we have a sense of urgency here to make, let's get ahead of this, make sure we're in compliance. Um, I don't think it would be the worst thing if we missed and took this up for the next year. So. I don't know if there was a question there, but um, but I guess I, I guess the the big question. I don't know if there was a question there, but, um, but I guess I, I guess the, the big question is, you know. So, okay, we missed, we missed twenty twenty-four. You know, I know the warrant process, right? If this is not a warrant, this is going to show up in a meeting and they, that's, that's what I. Um, you know, I know you have to, I know the timelines. I know that you gotta get them on there. You gotta get them printed. Then they add common, the selectmen are going to vote on them and then someone's going to stand up at town meeting and say, hey, we like this idea. And oftentimes the majority of the people at town meetings, oh, okay, well, these people think this is a good idea. I, I, I hope people, I hope the people that will weigh in on those decisions when it comes to town meeting. Will really not do it because we're checking a box. Because this is the best thing for the town, because I'm not sure that it is the best thing. Um, I hope that everybody will consider it thoughtfully. And, you know, if the decision is, hey, listen, you know, we're not recommending this now, or we want to indefinitely postpone it, or we want to postpone it till next year. I hope we go forward and make that decision for this community because. You know, uh, when it comes down to it, Lincoln Street, Beale Street, those buildings, hey, we, we, we wanted that, right? The forty Bs, hey, let's get our, you know, let's get all our quota filled right now. Now the state throws this new thing at us. And for some reason, I just can't see a monstrosity sitting at the corner of Ford Hill and French Street. Or Fresh River and French. I forget, once they got rid of that little triangle there. Hey, I, I, I know French Street starts now right off of Ford Hill, but, um, you know, I just think that. If it's two and a half stories, I don't know where a hundred and twenty units is coming from. I'm not even sure how many acres are there, you know, I suppose, okay, like five, six, I don't know what's there. But I just don't know how they squeezed fifteen units in per acre when they can only go up. Two and a half stories, if that's going to stay the zoning here, or is that going to change too? That is a question. If someone could tell me, will that change? Or does it really have to be in with the existing zoning of the community that the, um, the issue's in? Thanks.
Absolutely, Mr. Ferris. So, uh, Emily, I'll let you tackle this just in the sense, so, look, when we first discussed this lot, I think some of the, some of the board had the same questions, you know, how, how does this work? Can, you know, can this density be there? Does it fit? And you'll, Emily answered the questions and I'll let her kind of address it here, kind of the group, you know, the, kind of running through the model that they have to run it through to kind of determine that the lot's big enough to handle. You know, the required number of units if it were to work.
Yeah, sure. Our, um, outside consulting engineer has run it through that Excel file, uh, or compliance model. Uh, that we had mentioned a little bit earlier, but it essence, the property has about eight acres of opulence. Um, the two and a half stories may look something similar and, and I will say that that's the max. Um, so you don't, like a developer doesn't have to choose to build out to the, the maximum density allowed within each of the sub districts. Um, but something comparable in terms of land area and building height. Um, if you're familiar with it, might be up on Whiting Street, there's an assisted living facility. Has like kind of gabled roofs, um, at the, a portion of the Peniman Hill, um, farm. Uh, that's ninety units plus a lot of congregate living space. Um, so it could potentially, you know, in terms of form, look something along those lines. And, and those are the requirements, so it cannot be greater than the density allowed. Uh, it has to meet the setbacks, it has to meet the height limitations. Um, in order to be eligible for a site plan approval from the planning board. And then ultimately a building permit from the building commissioner.
That seems like it would just stand out such like a sore thumb, just like, you know, okay, here, you know, nice residential homes, as in the tree lined streets and boom, here you go. You know, it's like, uh, I don't know, here's a strip mall in the middle of the, of the neighborhood. Um, but. How about the, um, postponement, you know, is a, I mean, what, what's the penalty? I mean, you know, if we miss it. I know, you know, if you miss, you make sure you take it up the next year. Um, so, you know, it's like, I, I, I know everybody's in a hurry, but I hope, uh, I hope at the end of the day. We're not in a hurry if this isn't the right thing to do. Yeah. Appointed, uh, and elected officials say, is this right? And give that some real significant thought before they recommend it to all those people at town meeting.
Absolutely. I mean, that's, that's, you know, that's good to me is like exactly why we're here, um, in terms of compliance and non-compliance. I mean, that's in some ways above my career grade, um, you know, it'll be up to the town to some degree if the town votes to, um, you know, move forward the Communities Act proposal, then the town will be in compliance. The town's not rushing, like this is the only, this is the town meeting before we have to be in compliance. So in some ways it's kind of the outside date, it's not really rushing to be compliant, at least that's how I viewed it. Um, I suppose it's not to say that there couldn't be, you know, a, a later kind of town meeting where they take it up, but this is the way our town has set up town meeting. So this is, you know, from our perspective, the target we're looking to hit because it's the data compliance before the deadline from the state. So I, I, I don't see it as rushing to it. Um, I understand a different perspective, but I think that's why we're shooting for this town meeting and why. This is coming up in this context and now, and I think that's true of probably almost every community in Massachusetts. Except for those that choose not to comply or where the town, I guess, votes for non-compliance. Um, we went through some before, some of the financial risks, um. And to me personally, at least the risk is really, one, I don't want hanging to be the town that doesn't comply. Um, and two, you know, I don't want the A G's ire to focus on not compliance without really, um. Well, without giving it up, at least an opportunity to comply, I should say that. I mean, I feel somewhat duty is remember the planning board to at least get us an opportunity to comply. You know, the town is obviously a body and gets to vote and will make that decision.
Yeah, I'm not saying not comply, I'm just saying, you know, if you miss the deadline, you get the next deadline. Um, you know.
I'm not so sure that the state shares your sentiment, but, um, duly noted and, and thank you. I, you know, I understand completely your point. Uh, Mr. Roth?
Yeah, I have a, I have a quick question. So, um, it sounds like there's going to be.
Mr. Roth, do you mind to say your address for the record, please? I'm sorry.
Eight Stone Gate Lane. Um. There seems to be some diligence that's going to happen, um, after this meeting around, you know, potentially pulling up, uh, you know, G I S and looking for potential sites. I just want to clarify, given what we already have in the shipyard area and what have you. You, this site from French is not within point five, uh, miles of a train station. So any site that we find or choose to fulfill this requirement could be anywhere in the town. Is that correct?
Emily, yeah, it's a broad stroke, that's correct. Want, you know, if the shipyard brings us into the contiguous lot requirement and the kind of the, um, the area requirement. So the, where moments are above that, the, the next twenty-five percent can be elsewhere in town. That's right, outside of kind of the point five mile circle.
Got it. Okay. And then, and, and it, could someone please explain to me, um, the. The reason why we're looking at residential over commercial, given that the tax base, the, the rate is the same?
Kevin, I think I, I spoke to that already. It doesn't have anything to do with the amount of the tax rate. Um, I, from a bigger policy conversation, which is not a legal question. Um, the question for the town red hole is commercial tax base and commercial businesses as a general rule. Do not impose as many, um, demands on town services. Such as schools, plowing, even water use, et cetera, as people using their home and all the water they use in a home and that type of thing. So. In ten, in many towns, hang on being one of them, where the overwhelmingly amount of land is used for residential, which has a lot more demands. The goal is to try to, uh, protect, preserve, and if possible, grow your commercial tax base. In order to get those tax dollars in and be able to use them for the other things that the residents would like to use them for, such as schools and roadways, et cetera. So it, it does nothing to do with the rate of the tax base. It has to do with making a policy decision with respect to whether or not, um. You know, commercial areas should be converted to residential use, which might end up, you know, there would be less of a net. To the town in available taxes, because some of the taxes would go to provide services to those residential. When you, once you remove it from commercial. So listen, there is, there's, um, like I said, I'm, it, it's a policy question, not a legal question. I'm also not a accountant, a finance expert, but that I've been, you know, I've been doing this, as I said, sat on the planning board. I've been doing this for close to thirty years. That's the general premise around it. So it really has nothing to do with the tax rate. And it has to do with the, um, the net amount of tax dollars. That are achieved from the town from a commercial use versus the residential use.
Okay, yeah, that, that's very helpful. I think, you know, I would just ask the board to think about. Um, it, you know, it sounds like a, you know, a, a net dollars and cents, uh, you know, issue potentially for, for the town of Hingham. And, you know, this, this requirement to comply with state law is also on the town of Hingham. Um, and so I don't necessarily personally think it's entirely fair for this neighborhood to bear the cost. Of this, uh, imposition from our schools, our roads and our house values, when this is a town of Hingham issue. So if, if, if we, if this is a town of Hingham issue, I think everyone should bear that cost. And if that comes in a, a lower commercial tax base, then so be it. But it, to unduly impact, I think this neighborhood is entirely unfair.
I, I would only say to that, and I'm not discounting anything you've said. I would only say to that, that any parcels that the town chooses. Um, will impact somebody's neighborhood and, um, someone. And if, if the town chooses to, you know, substitute new parcels. Um, which of course, you know, the planning board and the other town officials will make that policy decision, then, um. There will be a lot of residents like the group that are here today, asking the exact same questions and concerned about their schools. Whether it's foster school or south school, et cetera, or east school, et cetera. So I, I, I think that all your points are valid, um, and I think the thing to keep in mind is that. All of your neighbors across the town as a town wide issue. Might have similar feelings to you depending on which parcel is chosen.
And, and I, I totally appreciate that. I think, you know, if we're talking about the, something around the Bank of America, you know, that's just the, the, the feel of that could not be more different than. Um, you know, if you choose to live, you know, uh, you know, in a, in the Avalon or something, like you're looking for a different experience than someone who lives in this neighborhood. And I think, you know, similar to the way Cohasset approached it, you know, there's a, there's just a, a. A, an approach decision that was made here that I think has led us to a, a decision that may not be the right one.
Mr. Roth, thank you. That's, that's well articulated and I appreciate the comment. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Uh, Becca Pierce, I don't think, I may have been wrong, you know, you spoke, yeah, please go ahead.
Hi, thank you. My name is Becca Pierce. I'm at Twenty Partridge Drive. Um, I just wanted to, um, comment on Susan's last, um, statement about how any area of the town would be. Um, unhappy to welcome this settlement to their, to their neighborhood. Um, and I would like you as a board to look at our student population within our neighborhood. We are extremely dense in student population. We range from ten to fifteen students per grade. Within our small area, so that's well over two hundred children. Biking, walking, taking the bus, relying on our public transportation for schools. Um, so that. That alone is a huge concern that I would like you to consider.
Thank you. Look, I, I, I get, my kids go to South School. I think a lot about the schools and, and the situation they're in. Um, you know, I, I'm sure my children are at the same age as a lot of children, people still on this call, so it's a point well taken and well understood. Thank you. Um, Mr. Roth, your hands still raised or if you're. Uh, Jim and Sue?
Uh, yeah, um, Jim Dresser, twenty-four French Street, forty-year resident. One more comment. I just want to say that the town of Hingham was non-compliant when I was on the advisory committee back in two thousand and two. You know, this doesn't need to be put on the front burner. It's a back burner question. And I kind of disrespect the town's process in getting here and I won't say anymore. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mr. Dress. I respectfully disagree that, that this is a back burner issue, you know, state mandate and. I, to me at least, I see it as part of our duty to try to comply, but I, I respect your opinion there. Um. Any other members of the public?
I'm sorry, I have to disagree. I mean, this has been on, this has been going on twenty-two years. We took the railroad, which we didn't want, I, in no small part to, you know, no, I mean, the, the planning board did help try to prevent that happening. But town planners are making a big mistake. This is one, it's being built on a previous dump, a previous lake. A pond, excuse me, a previous historic ice house. The town of, town residents need to know this stuff and it's not getting out there. I sent it to you privately and I, and I, maybe I'll just have to. Carpet bag everybody on, on this meeting. Good night. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dresser. Anybody else on the call want to speak? I, I, I don't want to cut off conversation if there's anybody that hasn't spoken that would like to speak, or if anyone has spoken, would like to speak again, please. I am not seeing anyone raise their hands or, or, um, you know, in, in real life or electronically. Um, so it's nine fifty. I don't think as a board, we're going to take up any other zoning articles tonight. Um, so Mike, I'll let you walk through how to kind of, um, you know, the dates to continue the two. I, I'll just say this, thank you very much for participating. Thank you for the letters. Thank you for the comments. Um. I, I understand the frustration, um, and I just want to reiterate, no one on this board is looking to force something on someone or, or to, uh. To, to, to hurt someone in any way, and I, and I hope that that's clear. I mean, we're here to listen, we're here to try to do what we think is best for the town and, you know, you are the town. I mean, Mike Puzo talks about that all the time at the town meeting, you are town meeting. So take your comments to heart. I do listen to and I appreciate them. Um, I take the comment of my body language very much to heart because that's not at all what I'm trying to convey. I, I am here to listen and to go through this process and from our perspective as a planning board, this is what we're supposed to be in this process. They understand the mismatch from the community's perspective here, why they think it seems really out of tune where we are on the process. So, yeah, that is duly noted, respected, I understand that. Um, I can't, again, thank you enough for your participation. Think we'll continue this discussion, Mike, to the twelfth of February. Is that, I don't want to mess up our meeting dates. Is that the next meeting?
Uh, the next meeting's on the sixth. The, the next meeting's on the fifth, um. Given that this is a robust discussion, I would recommend, um, continuing, continuing it to the twelfth. Um, because there's, there's more room on that agenda. There are a lot of permitting applications on the fifth. Um, just with respect to, um, some comments that folks have made about, um, links to these recordings. Uh, the planning board does not typically post, um, recordings to the website, but we're, we're, we're working with our I T department to figure out a way to do that. Um, in the meantime, if anyone is looking for a recording, you're always welcome to reach out. To, um, town hall staff to ask for those recordings. We're able to send links of those in, in, um, in emails with the, um, with the passcode. Um, but we are working on getting the, um, the recordings to the website.
Thank you, Mike.
So to answer your question, Kevin, um, the twelfth would be the best date to continue this article two. Um. With respect to other, um, zoning articles, I, I, I'm not sure if you want to do that for the next meeting.
Yeah, let's, let's focus on, focus on this. Um, I think the twelfth makes sense from my perspective as well. I, I knew we do have some permitting applications that I want to make sure we do this. One, the time for the planning board to consider and two, uh, you know, the time for, um, the next discussion to happen and, and make sure that the meeting doesn't. Run too long because we have some of those permitting applications to consider. So with that, I make a motion for the board. That we continue the hearing on, um, zoning article G and B T A communities, multifamily housing to the February twelfth meeting of the planning board at seven P M.
Second.
Second. Thank you, uh, Gordon. Um, quick roll call vote on that. Tracy Schreiber?
Hi.
Hi.
Gary, Tom, Artic?
Hi.
And we do this all the?
Hi.
And I'm an adult. Thank you. Um, so Michael, on the next, I'm just balancing out our scheduling. We have the flood plain maps. We have the special requirements with electric vehicle charging, signage reference and personal wire services. So. Two, three, four, five, I think others. Um, we already have some that are continued to next week's meeting, right? Is that correct?
Uh, no, we do not.
None. So you have our permitting kind of schedule, um, I just, I want to make sure that we're not opening these, people are waiting for them, we're not talking about them. I'm a little cognizant of that. I, I don't want to create that situation where we can't at least try to avoid it. Um, I'm happy to move them all to the next week and see what we get in terms of permitting and then we can kind of be a little more bifurcated after that.
Yeah, I think that makes the most sense. There are two other zoning articles, what you were thinking of, um, on the twelfth.
On the twelfth.
Um, but no, no others on the fifth. I think that makes sense. You could always continue some or all of.
Yeah, after that. Okay. Why don't we do that? See how, how we can move through these in, in, in terms of discussion and giving them their due time. So I make a motion that we continue the zoning article C, update of flood plain map references and regulations. Zoning article H, which is special requirements and the official open space district. Zoning article I, which is electrical vehicle charging parking requirements. J, which is sign into reference connections and K, which is personal wire the services facilities, all to the February fifth meeting of the planning board at seven P M.
Second, Gary.
Thank you, Gary. A roll call vote. Tracy Schreiber?
Bye.
Bye.
Rita, are you frozen?
Hi.
Oh, thank you, uh, Gordon Gar.
Bye.
Uh, Gary Tonordick?
Hi.
And I'm as well. With that, that brings us kind of the end of our substantive agenda, um. Thank you again to members of the public. Um, to the staff, do you have any other administrative reports that we want to go through, or we want to push those to the next meeting, I know they're on the agenda?
I don't have anything, Kevin, thank you.
Thank you.
I don't either.
Perfect, thank you. Again, thank you for your attendance, um, thank you, Susan, thank you, Emily, thank you, Michael, um, our staff and our council perspective, um, members of the board, I'll see you next week, I make a motion to return, it's nine fifty-four PM, second for that monkey?
Second.
Thank you, Rita, quick roll call vote, Tracy?
Bye.
Gordon?
Bye.
Gary?
Hi.
Rita?
Hi.
And I might as well. Have a good night, everyone, thank you.
Good night.
Night.